All right, Madam Chair, we are now live.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. The Board, State Board will come back to order. Thanks for joining us virtually today. Please remember to mute yourself when you're not speaking and to keep your video up. We have two full days ahead of us and we have scheduled breaks throughout the meeting as well as a long lunch today. I hope you're, if you're experiencing any issues with your system, please text, please text Angela. Ms. Moramba, would you please call the roll?
Board Member Durham?
Here.
Board Member Flores?
Here.
Board Member Goff?
Board Member Goff?
Here.
Board Member McClellan?
Here.
Board Member Rankin?
Here.
Board Member Shuffel?
Here.
Board Member Schroeder?
Here. Thank you.
Is there a motion, please, to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you. That's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let me go down quickly down the line to see if you have any changes or suggestions. Board Member Rankin?
No, I had some earlier, but my questions were answered, so I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Flores?
I just have that disciplinary one. 10.01.
So that's on the consent agenda? Let's go, let's wait for that one. No? Ms. Moramba?
Madam Chair, that is no longer in consent. It is after executive session this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
So Board Member Flores, we'll address it at that time.
Very good. Thank you.
Uh huh. Board Member Goff?
No, no questions.
Thank you. Board Member Shuffel?
No, thank you.
Board Member McClellan?
No concerns. Thank you.
Board Member Durham?
No thanks.
Okay, Ms. Moramba, do you want to call the roll, please?
Board Member Durham?
Here.
Board Member Flores? Board Member Flores?
Yes.
Board Member Goff?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Shuffel?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes, thank you.
That passes.
I appreciate a motion to approve items 4.01 through 23 on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve items 4.01 through 4.23 on the consent agenda as published in Board Docs.
The proper motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Let me quickly go down the line again to see if there are any items about which you would like to have pulled or about which you have a question. Board Member McClellan?
None for me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Board Member Flores?
None for me.
Thank you. Board Member Durham? Board Member Durham, do you have any concerns about the consent agenda? Any items you have questions about?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Shuffel?
No, thank you.
Board Member Rankin?
Madam Chair, I did have a couple and I did pull them from the consent agenda, but as long as you use the word concern, I'd like to put my concerns in, and that is approving some of the higher ed licensure without the Read Act requirements is concerning to me to continue with principal and teacher licensure and endorsements. So this is something that I will question if we have any further items on the consent agenda in the future in order to see what their syllabus is and whether they are covering the Read Act rather than send them out into the field without that background. I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
Sure. Board Member Rankin, you're talking about the alternative principal programs. Am I right?
On today's agenda, yes, and I'm also talking about the future and there are programs for principals since they're evaluating the teachers and that's my concern.
Would you like to, let's see, do you want to put this item on a future agenda to talk about the accreditation for alternative principal programs or?
Yes, and the teacher programs and the endorsements. I mean, they all need to come under that umbrella. It might be good to have it in the future because I think there are a lot of institutions of higher learning that do not understand what we're even talking about here and I think, I think that would be a good idea.
So these are not, these are not necessarily higher ed programs, right? These alternative programs, I'm not sure that we exactly know how they are handled, although they're, they're usually associated with a higher ed program.
Yes, I agree.
Is Ms. O'Neill available to just give us a?
Yes, she is on the line. Ms. O'Neill, could you just give a high level?
Good morning. Absolutely. Thank you all for the question. So for alternative preparation programs, the Colorado Department of Education staff, so my team in Educator Talent does review and approve all alternative preparation programs for principals as well as for teachers. So you do, we do use the State Board of Education rules, which require us to review scientifically based reading research and to ensure that that's embedded in those programs. So we do look for those and we do document them. So if we have concerns, we work those out before they ever even come to the Board of Education for approval with the alternative preparation programs. Alternative preparation programs can be associated with an institute of higher education, but many of them are BOSI's associations. So they're really run through our Colorado BOSI's programs, so they're not necessarily with an institute of higher education. So I will stop there and answer any other questions you might have for us.
Thank you, Dr. O'Neill. Ms. Rankin, does that, does that help address your question?
Yes, yes, and thank you for that, but I still, I don't know how to put this, if the endorsements or even those different programs, do they have a list of our approved reading programs that they are educated on before they go out into the field? Or we, do we just send them out there and hope that they, they have that kind of background?
Right. Thank you. Thank you.
O'Neill?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I, well, there's, there's two, there's a couple of different answers to that. The first one is, is that with our, our institutes of higher education, we, they don't teach curriculum. So the programs really aren't associated with the institutes of higher education. What is associated is the Board of Education rules that outline the standards for what we need to know around scientifically based reading research and how to teach, right, how they're teaching teachers, how to teach children to read. So they're absolutely being held to the requirements around scientifically based reading research and then introduction into the Read Act because each district is a little bit different. For alternative programs, remember those teachers are in the classroom today, like literally today. So they're on the job training, so they're teaching at the exact same time they're learning how to become teachers. So those programs try really hard to align with the districts in which the educator is being prepared. So we do make sure that we, I guess, advertise to our alternative preparation programs where the Read Act information can be found, where those requirements are. We review in depth with them what the programs are approved, but the alternative prep programs don't teach the actual approved reading programs. That goes into the school districts and that's kind of where it divides just a little bit. We definitely hold people accountable to ensuring they know what the Read Act is, what it is supposed to do, and what scientifically based reading research underpinnings for all of our educators are supposed to be before they graduate and hold them accountable to those standards.
I, thank you. Thank you for that, and I would like to hear that at every board meeting we have just because I believe this is new. I believe there are a lot of people out there that do not understand it, and I believe that because I have been out in the field and have been discussing it. And I, I do think it's, it's important because it is the law and it, I'm fearful of those that go out into the field and are learning from a mentor, a mentor teacher that may be using a curriculum within that school district that is approved within that school district, but does not align with our standards. There's where the, the difficulty I have is right now. And by your explanation, I think you are seeing some challenges there also, which I appreciate. And I sure wouldn't mind bringing this up at future board meetings because it is so important. And our board did vote 100% to support this and I truly do, but thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin. If I may suggest that you clarify your questions and give them to Ms. Moramba, and then we will talk about that when we set the agenda, just so we know that exactly which particular questions that you want to have answered. And I think the same goes for all of us if we have some questions about this particular issue.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Ms. Moramba, would you please call the roll?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Flores?
Yes.
Board Member Goff?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Shuffel?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
That passes 7-0.
Next item on the agenda is a report from the Director of State Board Relations. Ms. Moramba, what do you have for us today?
Yes, great. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining us virtually. Just a reminder to the public that all of our documents are on Board Docs for you. We are not accepting live public comment at this meeting, but if you'd still like to register to testify in the two rulemaking hearings we have this afternoon, please email stateboard@cbe.state.co.us. We did receive three live, excuse me, we did receive three written public comments that were sent to you all yesterday afternoon, and they've all asked that I read them into the record. So I will do that now and then that will conclude my report. The first one is from Lindsay Lush, who's a special education teacher. She says, "I would like to express my concerns with including Benchmark Advance and Benchmark Workshop on the recommended list of instructional programming approved by the CDE. These programs demonstrate significant weakness in teaching all five pillars of reading explicitly and systematically. While these programs do address all five areas in some way, the concepts are not intertwined to ensure students connect the skills to become proficient readers. Additionally, the three queuing system is taught, which can contradict that what the science of reading tells us kids need to become stronger readers. In fact, the three queuing system teaches students to use strategies that poor readers use. According to the CDE review, quote, "Examples were found in the program that are aligned to visual memory, guessing, and using context clues in order to decode words. To figure out a word, I can, one, look for clues and pictures, two, look for clues and words nearby, and figure out unfamiliar words." This, unquote, "The strategy should no longer be taught in schools and does not, as it does irreparable damage to students who are learning to read. Any program that includes this in their instruction does not align with the science of reading and should not be included as an approved program by the CDE." The second one was sent from a parent, Dr. Erin Sein, "To whom it may concern, my name is Dr. Erin Sein, and I am the mother of two elementary aged children, and I'm a parent advocate, parent advocate for struggling readers in Summit County, Colorado. For over a year and a half, I have attended countless courses both in person and online, learning about the evidence-based reading instruction. In my journey, discovering that science, the science of how children become literate, I have learned about a great divide between what researches in neuroscience and cognitive sciences tell us about how kids learn how to read and how kids are being taught in the public education system. Currently, my local district utilizes Benchmark literacy as a core literacy curriculum. Benchmark is a balanced literacy curriculum that utilizes the three queuing system heavily throughout their programming. As such, I was not surprised to discover that 60% of third graders read below grade level in our districts as measured by CMAS. As an advocate for struggling readers, I have been closely following the changes to the Read Act as well as the 2020 advisory list of instructional programming put out by the CDE this spring. I was surprised and disappointed to find out that Benchmark Advance and Benchmark Workshop were recommended for approval by CDE for core instructional programming. After reviewing Benchmark's new programs, it is clear that the curriculum is a wolf in sheep's clothing. They have all the correct verbiage to give the appearance of a highly polished program that adheres to the practices of evidence-based reading instruction. However, a quick review of the materials demonstrates otherwise. After review of the curriculum materials, it is obvious that Benchmark continues to adhere to the faulty and damaging practices of the three queuing system. It was my understanding that CDE guidelines for approving curriculum include only evidence-based curriculum that did not include the components of the three queuing system. Additionally, per the new Read Act legislation, only scientific and evidence-based instruction is supposed to be given to those students on Read plans. The research is clear, utilization of the three queuing system teaches children the strategies used by poor readers. As such, this program is clearly not in line with scientific and evidence-based instruction. It is my hope that CDE will reevaluate approval of Benchmark's core programming and not consider its approved until Benchmark embraces an evidence-based approach and more importantly, discontinues the use of damaging three queuing system techniques. As a mother of struggle, of two struggling readers, as a parent advocate of struggling readers and a concerned taxpayer, I would encourage you to reconsider the approval of Benchmark curriculum. Sincerely, Dr. Erin Sein. And the last one is from Lindsay Drakos, who's the co-chair of Colorado Kid. She says, "I'm very concerned about the inclusion of Benchmark Advance and Benchmark Workshop on the recommended list of instructional programming. Both rely on a three queuing system and are adequate, and there's adequate research that indicates the three queuing system is ineffective for children. I believe that the inclusion of this instructional program curriculum should be analyzed further. Thank you." And that concludes the public comment and my report.
Thank you, Ms. Moramba.
You're welcome.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Durham, go ahead.
I guess, based on hearing that, I would certainly like to have a briefing at some point in time on this issue from staff, either work it into this meeting if somebody's ready to do it, or pretty darn quick, even if we have to have a special meeting. I'd just like to, just like to make sure that we're on the right track and I don't know that I want to wait, leave this thing on the list if it doesn't belong there for an extended period of time.
So, Mr. Durham, we're going to be having a presentation, I believe, tomorrow on the rubrics for adopting these programs, and I think that seems to me that might be the very best time to listen to staff and to talk with staff about these comments. So thanks for bringing up and hopefully staff will be prepared to address these three letters. Is that all right?
Yeah, I would, I would hope that staff or that's, that's ready to address these concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Board Member Durham, our staff will be prepared to address those tomorrow. So thank you for that. And, Madam Chair, would you like me to just go into my commissioner report?
You are on. Yes.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of board. Nice to see you. Hope you're all doing well. Got a fair, fairly long report for you today. Lots has been going on, so wanted to make sure that you guys were up to date on everything. Obviously, I think you all are tracking the intensity of the school reopening debate and discussions. You know, you really can't turn on a television or a radio or anything without hearing about the challenging decisions that are being made, really by all parties, by superintendents, teachers, families, parents, and students. So there, there really is a lot of stress out there as they are working through difficult choices this year. I will say that I really think that everyone is working hard to find an appropriate balance between the difficult decisions to be made. The information changes rapidly and our districts are really adapting their plans as quick as they can. You know, there's a lot of dynamics at play here. There's the workforce dynamics in terms of our teachers and their fear and anxiety. There's, you know, the local boards of education, which are making decisions. There are superintendents who are working with local public health agencies to determine the data in their own community to, to help guide decisions as well. I really have heard, I will say, that, you know, from superintendent perspectives, that we're really all striving for a safe reopening of school and as much in-person learning as possible because we know that that is critically important. But we also know that as the virus is circulating differently in different communities, that that may look different for different districts. So there's lots of challenging discussions and decisions on the table for each of our districts across Colorado. I know you all are interested in sort of who's doing what. We are working with partners and ourselves collecting, you know, doing some of our own research to figure out what districts are doing. I will say if we did that a week ago, we would already have dramatic changes. So we're trying to like let things settle a little bit and determine how, you know, at least how the initial start is going to look, and then we'll share some of that information with you just around a statewide perspective, but we're still gathering that information and, and kind of seeing how that information is settling in. Additionally, we continue to work with the Colorado Department of Public Health on school outbreak guidance. You may have heard about this, about a little over a week ago, CDPHG released guidance for districts and local public health on what schools should do if there's a presumptive positive COVID case or if there is a tested positive COVID case. We, when that guidance was released, we got a lot of feedback from superintendents and others around the, the challenges of that, of the requirements there. And so we have since been working with CDPHG and providing feedback to them on like, how can we make that more feasible in, in schools and within the environment of schools while still ensuring that it's safe and rigorous and appropriate? So we are hopeful that a revised set of guidance will be coming out today and that that will help our superintendents. I'm not going to say it's going to be easy still because if there is a presumed case, schools do have to take action, but it will be, you know, we're, we're hopeful that it will actually be actionable and, and in some ways feasible. So we're working on that. Additionally, you know, we have gotten some feedback that within the health guidance, in the, in the phase we're in right now, which is safer at home, there's a large continuum of, of actions that you could be doing within that health, health order. And we've gotten some feedback that districts and local public health need some more metrics that would help them decide when they would need to pivot between an in-person learning situation, a hybrid learning situation, or a remote learning situation. So we are working on that as well. Some other states have, have done some of that and we're, we're working to see if some additional sort of guideposts can be issued to help, you know, make those critical decisions when a school district may need to pivot. So that's underway. That's, that's not exactly imminent, but it's, we're, we're working on that. As I mentioned, I think the workforce issues do continue to be a challenge for, for everyone, really. We know that, we know that our teachers are very anxious and fearful and we understand that anxiety. We also know that districts are navigating how, how they place teachers appropriately. With, if there are any teachers or staff with risk factors according to the CDC, then those teachers and workers must have accommodations within this pandemic. And that can create some workforce challenges and staffing challenges for our districts. Now, it looks different across every district because a risk factor can be age. It can be another health-related risk factor, but districts need to, you know, be able to provide accommodations, which may mean remote work for those staffers. So you can imagine that that also creates a challenge when they're figuring out all of these different plans. We're also looking at, you know, our substitute pool across Colorado because we, we do know that, you know, if a teacher has been exposed or if there's a positive case, you know, then there are quarantine rules. And so then we would have to figure out substitutes. And so, you know, many, sort of anecdotally, I don't have the specific data on this, but anecdotally, many of our substitutes are older. And so that also poses sort of a workforce challenge. So these are all of the variables that we are navigating right now and that our districts are navigating as we work really hard to, you know, get school back underway in a really safe way. The governor, you may have heard, the governor has secured masks, K95 masks, for every staff person that interacts with students. And we are working with the Emergency Operations Center to get those masks delivered to our schools across the state. That is, he has pledged one mask per week per staff member who interacts with students for 10 weeks. So we're working on getting those shipments out. We're mostly doing that through the Emergency Management Operations Center because they have delivery capabilities and supply chain capabilities that, that the department does not have. But we're, we're working on coordinating with districts so they know when and where and how to receive those masks. Lastly, or not lastly, but I will mention the stakeholder group that is tasked by the statute, by a statute last year, the School Finance Act, to put together some recommendations that you would be reviewing, that the legislature would be reviewing, and the governor's office would be reviewing around what implications, what policy implications or changes might need to be considered based on the COVID situation, based on the situation that happened in the spring and, you know, the current situation that we're facing. So we are about to announce that group. We know that there is enormous interest in that group. We had over 200 applications for it. So we know that there's great interest in it. Therefore, we will be figuring out additional ways for everyone to give feedback because not everyone was able to be selected for the group. So we will try to figure out additional mechanisms for folks to give feedback and we will be streaming those meetings to allow for additional input. I do have a couple other things I want to talk about, but I realize I'm giving you a ton of information, so I might want to just pause here and see if there's questions. So I might want to just pause here and see if there's questions so far.
Colleagues, do you have any questions? Doesn't look like it. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. Some other things that I know many of you are hearing about on the news and with your constituents are sort of different remote learning options that are cropping up, you know, different creative options that parents, teachers, and even districts are working through. One of those has been sort of called a POD, a learning POD or a micro school. And that is, some of you asked questions about that, so I'm just going to give you some highlights on that. There are some communities, and this looks really different across, you know, there's a million different ways you could form these. So sometimes our districts are forming learning pods, which are smaller groups of students supported by either teachers or paraprofessionals or even other staff. You know, there are some creative things happening with like bus drivers, you know, supporting students, and that might be more of a childcare option. But we also know that parents are doing this as well. So parents in communities are forming their own learning POD. So they might get together with several other families in their community, and they might say, let's bring our students together and let's trade off supports for helping our students learn. Those could look anything from just basic tutoring, you know, just an adult who maybe is not specially trained, but an adult who helps students go through their remote coursework. Or it could look like childcare, you know, which is not really that focused on the learning aspect, but just trying to provide childcare for parents who need to go to work. Or it could look more formalized. You know, we actually do have some districts that are trying to do learning pods, and those look a little more formal, and they're staffed by teachers. So there's a whole variety of what these learning pods could be. Some might be sanctioned by the school districts. Others may just be community-based parents organizing and putting things together. So there's a very wide variety of this. Some regulatory questions have come up in this realm. And so both regulatory questions for the education program, but also regulatory questions on childcare. And so we actually are sort of learning right alongside everyone. You know, depending on how formal that POD is or that micro school is, you know, different regulations might apply. And we're trying to understand all those different variations so that we can help parents when they ask us questions, but also school districts when they ask us questions, or even childcare facilities when they ask us questions about what regulations would apply. And we're working through some of that with the Colorado Department of Human Services as well as the governor's office and others. But it's quite an emerging trend. And, you know, there's, as I said, there's anywhere from like a micro school being considered a private school, you know, or really informal things that might be very few students that would be considered homeschooling or just childcare. So lots of different applications for this idea. And, you know, we're trying to get our hands around it as well, while still, while still supporting creativity and flexibility during this very challenging time.
May I jump in and ask a question?
Go ahead, Board Member Flores.
Yes, I read that article, I believe it was from The Independent, about students who are jumping from one district to another or from one program to another, and the probability of just chaos kind of creating about where students belong and, and also, I guess the money's related to how that's going to be. The state is going to pay that out. Maybe I'm not explaining it correctly, but I think most of you read that article. So what is being worked out there? I mean, are students being asked to stay within their district? Are there any regulations concerning students not doing that? I know in other states, there are laws about where students can go and what they can't do, jumping borders or jumping districts like that. That could cause havoc.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Flores. I think you have your finger on the pulse of a lot of questions we're all wondering about. But, you know, a lot of times these learning pods, the students are still enrolled in their school district, but they might just be getting additional supervised learning, right? Because if they're still doing remote learning in their district, parents may just be sort of coordinating with each other to say, hey, we want all of our kids, a small group of kids, to be together and have one parent supervise them and maybe help them through their learning, their remote learning, or maybe it's just supervised, adult supervision.
Excuse me, I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about actually students online going to other, online in other districts. And the example given was the San Luis area where they had had 170-something students usually that register in that district, and now they have 130 students, and they don't know where the others have gone to. Or, anyway, there were specifics about what had happened and how that's going to, who's going to get credit for, which district will be getting credit for that. And I wasn't talking about the POD specifically, just about the online learning that's going on and students, and maybe parents moving as well. I mean, I think we do know of parents, I do know of parents who have moved, I mean, because of this.
Yeah. No, I, thank you, Board Member Flores, for your clarification. We think we're going to learn a lot during the October count. Colorado does have open enrollment laws, so parents can make choices about which districts or online schools they want to go to. We will know more about that once we get through our October count. You know, we will probably have more data cleaning to do, but technically, a student can only be enrolled in one school or one school district. So, you know, that, the way our laws work is the per pupil funding goes to that district or school where the student is enrolled. We do know, we agree with you, there's a lot of movement right now. There's a lot of transition. So we do think October count is going to look very different, and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have to sort through that as we get it and make sure that, you know, kids aren't being double counted and those sorts of things because I do know funding is an issue.
Thank you very much.
Katie, or Dr. Anthes, could I ask two questions? One is, is there an age, an upper age limit at which the Department of Health or whatever the licensing agency stops worrying about childcare? Do you know?
That's a good question. I don't know that off the top of my hand. I'll see if, oh, it looks like they license through age 18. I know.
Yeah, that figures. And then relative to the October count, at what point does funding start to get adjusted based on that count?
That's a good question. Jennifer Oaks, are you on the phone by chance? I don't see your name here. We usually, I'll try to answer that, which is, October count really is a little bit of a misnomer because it goes all through October. There's sort of an average, and districts can true things up. And so we usually don't actually have definitive numbers because then we need to do data cleaning if there are discrepancies, or I think we're going to have a lot more data cleaning to do this year because we may see double enrollments or something like that. So we usually don't have that till December, usually, all cleaned up and ready to go over to the legislature.
Well, whenever it, whenever the, I presume the, today, I think on the agenda, we're approving a monthly payment, a dispersment. And I presume that was based on attendance estimates. We're now in the new fiscal year, so it was based on attendance estimates for this coming school year. That is, the JBC had to estimate the number of children, the number of children that would be enrolled in Colorado schools for reimbursement purposes. And there's a total amount of money, which is currently being divided probably on historical basis as opposed to, unless we've asked each district to estimate the number of students they're going to have, and I don't think we've done that. So we're paying on essentially a historical basis from last year?
Yeah.
I think it'd be helpful if Ms. Oaks could give, you know, when these things change, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're also, whenever there is a change in number of students in a district, there's a five-year average. Is that correct? Three-year average, five-year average?
Yes, there is an average.
Five or three, I forget. So schools that experience declining enrollment don't take the full brunt of the hit up front if there is significant. And, but, and I don't know if it's true, I presume the opposite is not true, that if you have increasing enrollments, so that if you get some of these schools that get significantly more students, they will, they should get their increased funding for that as soon as they have an October count. So sometime, at least once we've certified that count, then the reimbursements would change. And that, those are the questions that I'd like Ms. Oaks to be able to answer and to give us the timeline and the effect of the five-year averaging on both high growth or both on growth and declining enrollment.
Okay. Yes, thank you. We'll make sure that Ms. Oaks has that for her presentation. Okay. The last thing, well, actually, I have a couple others. As I said, a lot of updates today. I did want to let you guys know, make you aware of a grant that we received. This got a little bit lost in the COVID fervor. We applied in September of 2019 for a statewide longitudinal data system grant. It was sort of another grant opportunity that we had had probably 10 years ago. And it was an opportunity, to be honest, we weren't really sure, it was sort of a long shot, we weren't really sure that we would get it. But knowing that we have some technological infrastructure upgrades we need and that many of you are interested in better data visualization tools so that parents can make good choices about their schools and others, we applied for a grant, and lo and behold, we received it. So kudos to our team. We received it in February 2020. That was right before COVID hit. $2.7 million over three years. And so the startup for that grant has been a bit slow because right when we received notification, sort of the COVID situation hit, and so there were some pauses and, you know, more slow up, you know, getting started. But just wanted to share with you that we're excited we're going to get that. That's going to be, that's going to allow us to do some, not as many as we need, but some infrastructure upgrades to our software systems, our infrastructure systems. This is all a part of keeping our data secure and private. And it is also to think about how we support data connecting with some of the things that I know you all care about. So in our strategic plan, we're also very interested in knowing how students matriculate out of K-12, do they get good jobs? You know, we base a lot of our accountability on test scores and other measures, but really one of the measures we know you all are interested in is career measures. Does a student get a good job after school? And so this is going to help us think through some of the appropriate linking that we might be able to do with all the privacy concerns in place to say, how do we know where our students are going after K-12, and are we preparing them? So this grant is going to help us explore some of that, help us upgrade some of our technology, and we're glad that we received that grant. And we will update you more along those lines as we move forward with that. And then lastly, just wanted to make you aware that some of the other work, the normal work of the department keeps on going. And we were selected for another audit, another state audit. This audit, this is our state auditor that kind of goes through and audits different agencies for different purposes, and they're sort of a rotating basis. We were selected to do an audit on our foster care program, and so just wanted you to be aware of that. We're working through some data sharing processes with the auditors. We, obviously, you know, we have enormous amounts of data, and we are trying to be very thoughtful. We're trying to be good partners, but we're also trying to be very thoughtful of your, you know, your scrutiny and want for us to be very careful with how we share data.
Could I ask a good question, Madam Chair, about the foster care audit piece? Go ahead. I just wondered, I didn't think that was under the purview of CDE. Am I wrong about that?
There, you are correct that most foster care work does not happen under us, but we do have a program that is to support foster children in increasing their learning supports, increasing their academic success, and coordinating educational transition services, like coordinating services with courts, state agencies, and schools. So we do have a role in supporting their academic development.
Okay, I didn't realize that connection. I appreciate it.
So that is some additional work that multiple teams are doing that takes our data teams as well as our program staff to get them the information they need. Okay, I believe that is all.
That was a very lengthy report. It looks like you all aren't doing anything at the moment.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Any questions, colleagues, before we move on? All right, the next item.
is our regular twice-a-year informational update on the Accountability Clock Progress Monitoring Report. Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Rhonda Hannaford, Lindsay Jekyll and Julie Woods.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Julie Woods and with me is Lindsay Jekyll from the School and District Transformation Team. We're here to provide, as Madam Chair mentioned, one of the two scheduled updates provided to the board each year on the progress of schools and districts with board-directed action.
Sorry.
Today we'll provide a review of the Accountability Clock and Progress Monitoring processes, and then we'll dive into those progress monitoring reports that you have for four different tracks of schools and districts. And then lastly, we'll briefly cover next steps. So as I'm sure you recall from our last few board meetings this past winter, after five years of low performance, schools and districts must have action directed by the board designed to improve student achievement. And as those schools and districts implement those board-directed actions, the department also provides support and monitors the progress of school and district improvement. So we're here today to provide a brief update on that process, to continue to create transparency and keep the board informed as progress is made, and also to recognize the incredible work of these schools and districts, especially during this unprecedented time. So you'll recall that the department has a variety of mechanisms that it uses to monitor the progress of schools and districts with directed action. And each school and district is assigned a staff person from our team, a turnaround support manager who can walk alongside them in the planning and implementation of their pathway plan and board-directed action. Our turnaround support managers provide a written progress monitoring report to the board twice a year. So like I mentioned in your packets, you have those reports for each school and district. Given the challenges that schools and districts faced this spring due to COVID-19 and the lack of available high-quality data, we have modified that report this time to reflect how these schools and districts have been adjusting their approaches to their improvement plans. Uh, and our progress monitoring approach has also been adjusted to a remote setting. So instead of in-person meetings, our turnaround support managers are doing virtual meetings. And we're working on a more comprehensive plan for those visits and observations in a remote setting for the fall. So now we're going to dive into the progress monitoring the department has been doing. You'll recall there are essentially four possible tracks that schools and districts with directed, directed action can be on, and the department is monitoring schools on each track. So there's the early action folks who are in year three or four that are, that have opted into directed action with the board's approval. Our traditional hearings for schools that have reached the end of the clock at year five. Schools that must come before the board again because they have not yet improved, those are the rehearings in that orange and red box. And then lastly, the schools that remain on watch. In other words, they have improved their performance but have not yet come off the clock, which would require two consecutive years of a priority improvement. So these are our schools and districts currently being monitored, monitored and supported by the department and the track that they're on. It includes the four schools that the board saw for the first time this past winter for year five hearings. So we're going to provide a quick overview of the schools and districts and their directed action, and then we'll focus on their plans for returning, uh, to learning this fall and then whether there have been any major adjustments made to their pathway plans. And I'll just add the caveat here that these are evolving plans, some of which had not yet been completed when we were last in touch with the school or district. And we're, we have really tried to give schools and districts a little more flexibility and grace here with their responsiveness to our requests, given that they're all dealing with some on hands, all hands-on-deck situations as they prepare to start the school year. In your progress monitoring reports, you can also see how the shift to remote learning went for each school and district in the spring, starting about in March. But for brevity, we won't cover that in this presentation. And then lastly, before I turn it over to Lindsay, I want to note just a few general trends we've seen across those folks with directed action. So generally, at this time, we're not seeing substantial changes to pathway plans as a result of COVID-19 and changing, changes to how learning takes place. Many of these plans have really been able to pivot to a remote environment. We've also seen a real focus on ensuring student engagement. So that could look like tracking attendance and synchronous instruction, tracking participation and tracking completion of activities and assignments. And in some cases, schools have reached out to families to check in when that engagement drops. And we've also seen a commitment to ensuring access to devices and to the internet. In districts, especially that are starting remotely or in a hybrid format like Denver, Aurora, Adams 14 and Pueblo, they're really working to ensure all students have access to a device and making plans to ensure internet access. So I'm going to turn it over to Lindsay now to provide a summary of each school and district, and we're happy to take questions at the end.
Great. Um, and they, thank you all for having us today. As Julie mentioned, your materials have more detailed info sheets. So we're going to provide you with some highlights over the next couple of minutes. But if you were, you want more information about each of these schools, that is available for each, each school in the info sheets. So we're going to start with those early action schools. Gateway High School and North Middle School, which are both in Aurora, are two schools that opted into early action. And in 2018, um, were directed to implement partial management pathway plans. Gateway High School has a partial management plan with communities and schools to provide and coordinate wraparound supports for students and help the school establish a ninth-grade academy. North Middle School has a partial management plan with MGT to support the school in four key areas around instruction. So both, um, for both North and Gateway, this spring, the management organizations were able to pivot to provide support remotely. And so we're going to focus on what the fall will look like. Um, as, as Julie mentioned, our districts are doing a mix of in-person and hybrid instruction. And for Aurora, remote learning is planned until mid-October. For high school students, um, students will take two to three courses in short, three-week cycles in that remote environment. And so far, there haven't been any major adjustments to the pathway plan. Communities and schools will continue to provide supports to students to help them stay engaged in remote learning and be, and be successful in that environment. CIS had staff onsite at Gateway and that has moved, so they are operating remotely and is continuing to provide support to students and staff in a virtual environment. For middle school students, so at North Middle School, um, students will attend the first quarter with five periods a day of synchronous instruction through video. MGT staff will continue to work with subject, area and grade level teams to support teachers with planning for that remote instruction and will be able to join those lessons, um, virtually to observe and provide feedback on instruction. So at this time, for those two schools, there are no major adjustments to the pathway plan and they'll continue to assess as the year goes on, on how to continue to provide support for instruction as, as the situation evolves. So now we'll talk a little bit about those schools who are in our rehearing bucket. So these are the schools and districts that the board has seen more than once. Adams 14 was directed to implement a full management plan for the district and has a full management plan in place with MGT that also includes Adam City High School and Central Elementary. Rizley Middle School in Pueblo was directed to implement a full external management plan and has a four-year contract with MGT that began in April of 2019. And Aurora Central High School, you saw last fall and was directed to continue implementing their innovation plan with the addition of an academic-focused provider. So they have a continued partnership with Mass Insight to support teachers in professional learning. And in the spring, just before COVID, added a partnership with the Public Education Business Coalition, or PEBC, to support the academic focus. For Adams 14, remote learning is planned through early October and the district is planning for three possible routes, so remote, hybrid or traditional in-person for the future, so they can pivot between those models as needed in the fall. Uh, MGT has continued to, did this spring and continued to work alongside the district staff remotely. And of course, a lot of that work has gone into planning for the fall, but some of the turnaround activities have continued. That includes this, uh, spring and summer, the district attended the University of Virginia training. And they have continued their district reorganization and focus on the work at Adam City High School despite the shift to working remotely. So at this time, there are no major adjustments to the pathway plan and you will hear a deep progress monitoring update from MGT in September. At Rizley, this spring, there were some staffing changes at MGT. The district and MGT are working on an updated plan to address these changes and the COVID environment that adds a layer of complication. You did receive a memo from us earlier this week explaining all the changes at Rizley in more detail and we're happy to answer more questions about that during our question-answer period. Pueblo's current reopening plan is that elementary school students will attend in-person and secondary school students will have a hybrid approach with two days in-person and two days remote. But the district is also offering 100% online option for families, so they can have the choice that best fits their needs. And Pueblo had a strong one-to-one initiative before COVID and continues to have that as a major priority to make sure that all students K-12 have access to a device and reliable internet. Despite COVID, a new leader was selected for Rizley this spring, as, along with a new assistant principal. And the leadership team and the district team attended UVA, um, this spring and summer, which was held remotely. Relay Graduate School of Education, as, as you read in the additional detail about Rizley, has been added to provide support at Rizley for instruction and will begin that work this fall. So as I mentioned, the school and the district and MGT are working to modify their plan and that may require some modifications to their order in the, in the coming, um, coming weeks. So, um, and those modifications address changes to their plan and some of the effects of COVID. Aurora Central High School, as with North and Gateway, will be remote until mid-October. Students will, in, at the high school level, will take two to three courses on a short cycle. And Aurora Central's new academic provider, PEBC, started the work this spring. Both partners were able to observe PLCs and set up opportunities to observe obstruction, instruction and give the school feedback. And they anticipate being able to do that even during this, um, remote period and will continue to evolve as students return to the building. So now for our schools on watch. So these schools had improved to a rating above priority improvement but have not yet had that rating for two consecutive years. Minnaqua is implementing a partial management plan with Relay, which includes, um, oversight over the instruction, over instruction and coaching support for the leader, the principal and the leadership team. Aguilar District, which also includes Aguilar Junior/Senior High School, is implementing a partial management plan with Generation Schools focused on strengthening data-driven instruction and other instructional practices. Before the accountability pause, both Minnaqua and Aguilar were showing really positive trends that we, that may keep them off the clock, um, and they may be able to demonstrate those continued positive trends. So as I mentioned, Pueblo's plan, um, is for elementary school students to return in-person. And Minnaqua had some building blocks in place before the transition. The school used Google Classroom for blended learning, so they had devices, um, for students to work from. And teachers were able to quickly pivot to using Google Classroom to post assignments while remote. So Relay, as their management provider, um, provided and will continue to provide regular support for the schools. Relay support, um, last year included both in-person and remote coaching. So they were able to pivot to that remote coaching environment, um, once COVID started, once COVID happened. The principal at Minnaqua continued to meet with Relay every week, sharing professional learning, videoing PLCs and professional development to get feedback from Relay as they were implementing. Relay has helped support this school in continuing to plan for a return to instruction, um, this fall. In Aguilar, elementary school students will attend in-person while secondary students will attend half-days and work remotely when not in-person. Aguilar worked with their teachers to increase, um, school days this year in anticipation of potential closures. And their management organization, Generation Schools, has continued to provide support to the district with a focus this spring on planning to, pivoting to remote instruction. And they have no major changes to the pathway plan this coming year other than really continuing to support the delivery of high-quality instruction in a remote environment. And the district has made some strong progress on their four key areas in their pathway plan. And one big key area for the district this fall is the rollout of the new, new literacy curriculum and, um, ensuring their ability to do that as they adapt to the changing environment they see. So, and it was not specified in their pathway plan, but we wanted to highlight an innovative approach that Aguilar has taken to school improvement. They've implemented a partnership with Levita, which is a neighboring, high-performing district. The Levita superintendent and the Aguilar superintendent work very closely to plan professional development for the Aguilar teachers. So in the coming year, the two districts plan to work closely again. They've already held a cross-district leadership team retreat and they've created teacher-led huddle teams made up of teachers from both districts, so they can meet virtually and support one another in common areas of focus this year. And we are really excited about this partnership and it'll be interesting to watch and see how that supports the teacher teams in both districts. And we wanted to highlight that as one of the first districts back already in-person, Aguilar had a really nice, um, two-part feature on CBS Denver about their reopening plan and we're happy to share a link to that if you're curious and want to watch. And then finally, we wanted to highlight those schools you saw this past winter for their first hearings. These schools, of course, are just starting the implementation of their plans, but we thought it was important to share if there have been any updates or changes from when you saw them, um, just six or seven months ago, which feels like a very long time ago, that may have happened between then and now. So Pueblo Central High School, um, continued to hold remote visits with their Relay partner who observed instruction and, um, the support from Relay will increase in this coming year. The principal attended UVA in June along with the new leadership team from, um, Rizley and with the district leadership team. The current management plan will continue with Relay providing remote coaching, um, support and site visit support. And as I mentioned, for Minnaqua, Relay's model already combined in-person with remote, so they've been able to pivot and anticipate they'll be able to ramp up this year as, as expected. Phil Metz, um, of course, has a partial external management plan and GSN, Generation Schools Network, provided, um, support this spring to help the district pivot to, uh, remote learning. The school's directed action really began in July of 2020 and so spring of 2020 was really spent revisiting the priorities and saying, how do things need to change for the coming year? Generation Schools in the district have narrowed their two top priorities for at least the first half of the fall, just really focused on being able to deliver high-quality instruction. They are also implementing a new literacy curriculum, and so that remains a big area of focus for the coming year. Abraham Lincoln, um, High School in Denver was directed to implement an innovation plan and, um, last year began an initiative called My- and, um, last year began an initiative called My Tech to give students access to devices. And so they were able to capitalize on that when they needed to pivot to remote learning. Um, the school continued to set common expectations for planning for remote learning, including schedules, um, lesson plans and providing resources. Teachers are meeting Met and PLCs this, uh, spring and continue to meet over the summer to prepare for the launch of the school year. Leaders and coaches observed instruction in the spring remotely and are planning to do so, uh, this fall. And since Denver will start remotely, um, the planning is underway to implement their, uh, freshman academy and their college and career pathway model, um, and doing that freshman academy in a remote environment, but providing oppor- opportunities for incoming ninth graders to meet together and build community. Um, both Manuel and Lincoln, this spring participated in the University of Virginia program, um, and UVA adjusted their support with virtual site visits this fall. And, um, UVA will provide some targeted professional development to these two schools and the district, um, as they continue to work, uh, virtually, um, this, this fall. So now I'm going to turn it back over to Julie for, to talk about next steps and then we're happy to answer any questions about schools or about things generally.
Great, thank you, Lindsay. So our next steps at the department include continuing to monitor the progress of how these schools and districts are implementing those pathway plans and executing on their directed actions. We also do want to flag the possibility of schools and districts pursuing early action hearings. As you know, no one is advanced to year five this year because of the accountability pause, but, uh, some may want to accelerate access to key state, uh, supports and dive into this work sooner. So those hearings, if they occurred, would, uh, happen at the end of this year or early next year. And then you'll recall that we flagged in our last presentation to the board and in the memo the board received recently, that the department is working to develop a process through which schools and districts could, under extreme circumstances, request some kind of change to their order or pathway plan. Given the changing circumstances across the state in the last six months, uh, we want to be prepared with a consistent and appropriate mechanism for this sort of request. So we've detailed that a little bit more in the memo provided to the board and, and are happy to answer questions or receive feedback on that proposal. And then lastly, as I mentioned before, the department is working to update both its approach to progress monitoring and to the reports that we provide to the board. So as we move along with that work, we welcome any thoughts on what information the board would like to receive on the progress of these directed actions, schools and districts. And now, uh, we're happy to answer questions, um, and we can also bring questions or comments back to schools and districts on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Angelica, I think you're on mute. I mean, Madam Chair.
I am on mute, but I don't know how that happened. I think Ms. Marombo is going around messing with my. Let me try this again. This is an opportunity for us to ask questions or make comments about this report and I'm just going to go down the line, please, uh, and call on you. Board Member Sheffel, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I had a plumbing leak, so I'm leaving a few minutes just to get the plumber, get, get him going. So I apologize for leaving my screen. Anyway, thanks for the great report. My question is, do you feel like, do you feel like the schools have, um, just this kind of a qualitative question, good support for the remote aspect during this time where they're trying to address these challenges instructionally? Do you feel like MGT and others that are partnering with the schools have the expertise to continue to move the ball on achievement or what is your sense in terms of people, you know, the partners coming up to speed, uh, with new instructional modes to really support these schools?
Who wants to go first, ladies?
Yeah. Great question. Complicated question. Um, I generally think that we've seen, um, a lot of innovative, um, and just roll up your sleeves, try to figure it out responses. Um, some partners and some districts did seem more ready to pivot. Um, some districts had by chance or by luck recently adopted curriculum that had like online components that just made it easier, um, than if everything really was written for in-person instruction and not, and having to record all those lessons and deliver those lessons and figure out what, what that should look like and what some of the best practices are for engaging with students, um, during a course, uh, you know, during an hour synchronous class, um, was very different. I think we are seeing partners willing to adapt, um, and still hold tight to what we are good at is providing feedback on instruction and we are going to help support you in, in still doing that, um, even if you are delivering remote instruction, we're going to figure out ways, whether that be videoing instruction and sending it to us or joining, um, live courses. We did see partners really willing to pivot, um, to do that.
And I just had a follow-up question. Are they mostly using a synchronous, uh, mode to interface with the schools or asynchronous? Just in my experience, the synchronous piece is really so much more effective than just uploading documents for people to access. I mean, are they working together in real time?
Yes, uh, Madam Chair. So partners, I, I would say we're working in real time and trying to observe synchronous instruction. What we heard from districts was, um, synchronous was really difficult when devices and Wi-Fi were inconsistent. It's really hard to help ensure a student can consistently log in for an hour to observe that. And so for equity issues, they wanted to make sure that that was available asynchronously, um, and helping to support parents who may have, you know, multiple students doing synchronous instruction at the same time, different grade levels. Um, and so I think when possible, they tried to do both, um, have opportunities for students to engage face-to-face because it, or video-to-video because it is effective, but also know that they need to make that accessible so that if parents needed to help, um, students in the afternoon or on a, on a schedule that works for them, they could do that. And I think that was the rationale for a lot of our schools in looking at completion of assignments and still really focusing on the quality of student work and what they were able to do during that time, um, was another theme that we heard because, um, you know, students may have done, been, had to do something, um, off-hours as they were, um, adjusting to their family's needs and requirements.
Right. All right, thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Woods, did you have anything to add to Ms. Sheffel's questions?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Flores, questions?
I, I do have, uh, questions and some, um, just some statements I'd like to make. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I know that, um, we're, we're working with these schools that not only maybe, uh, that are economically, uh, poor and they have, you know, uh, other, may not have all kinds of resources such as computers and such. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm just looking at the, at the names of all these, uh, school districts and of course, we know some of them because they've come before us. And I was just wondering, I mean, we do our reading program, which I think is, is, is great because, you know, teachers will be learning how to, how to, uh, teach reading, but I also kind of am concerned about information. I mean, they're getting a lot of skills training, a lot of, and the kids are, are doing as well, but I'm concerned about the information. You know, these kids need to read a lot of books. They need to be reading lots of books to be gaining information. I know, um, we've gone through a period where I think people don't think information is important, but you have to think, you have to have information in order to, to solve problems and such. And so if we are so heavy on skills, which again, I think you can teach skills and, um, reading skills and you can also have a high information load. And I think that sometimes the information part is missing. And I'm thinking about some, some programs. Uh, for instance, let's say the STAR program, which is doing great. I've been looking at San Antonio and have heard the superintendent, uh, in San Antonio make a lot of presentations on how well his school is doing or the schools in San Antonio are doing with ESL kids. And we do have some kids in many of these schools that are ESL or that, uh, have English learners. And so, yes, it's important. I think it's important in the very early grades that they, you know, that they get that. But, I mean, I think skills can really tune out kids if it's too much skills and not enough stories, not enough books for them to read. I'm wondering if we have done anything with, or we could help in some way get books to kids. Um, I know that with computers, they can also hear and read books at the same time. I think that books are just so incredibly important, especially now that we have, uh, the technology. I think it, it would be better if kids had, say, a book and the technology to read along and as many books as possible with a high information component, where they're learning social studies, they're learning civics, they're learning, um, well, through stories. I mean, I think we can teach anything through stories. I think the, 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 um, the knowledge that is out there in, uh, psychology is, is, is great, that really we should start kids learning to read as early as, you know, third grade, second grade, I mean, not grade, uh, two-year-olds and three-year-olds. And I really wish we had, you know, a lot of early childhood education with kids just reading books. And I do believe that kids can learn anything. I'm not, I'm, I'm very much, um, of the belief that Brewer is, is, you know, great. And I'm not too, too happy with, um, I'm trying to think of the Swiss psychologist that everybody kind of mentions all the time, Piaget. And so I, I think if we had more knowledge base or, um, not that the STAR program, starting out, it would be great, but I think we need some other programs such as, um, these programs, uh, that are just dense with information and with lots of book reading. That's what we need these kids in these schools to be doing.
Thank you, Board Member Flores. Do you have some more questions about the, uh, update that we just received, the monitoring report for these, I want to say 14 schools, but I'm probably wrong? Well, give you questions, please?
Um, well, questions, yes, I read and I have been listening and, uh, I think we're doing what we can do during this period of times.
That's great.
But I, I, I do feel that, uh, what is very needed is, is books. Um, and somehow get as many books to the hands of these kids as possible, especially, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned that they won't because they, many of them will be online. They're, they don't have access to libraries and I think libraries are so important. I know they were very important for me and I'm sure they're very important for many, many kids, that they have an option of being able to receive. I wish we could have packets from Scholastic or from some other organization that would just send biography, civics and, and, and such for them to read. I'm very concerned that they may not have reading, uh, reading of any kind and geography and all that. I just want to emphasize that.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Board Member Floris.
Thank you very much.
Board Member Goff?
Yeah, I feel like I'm in a classroom. I think Ms. Rebecca had her hand up before, right? But, um...
Colleagues, let me explain to you how this works. I just have a list of names to make sure that I remember each of you. And so I'm not looking at the screen, I'm looking at my cheat sheet that I have here.
Okay.
So, uh, Ms. McClellan, I will definitely call on you. Thank you. Board Member Goff, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I don't know whether this actually applies right here in this conversation or whether or not it's going to come up later when we talk more about, um, certain schools that are reporting to us, memos we've had recently. I'm curious as to whether the, um, MGT management situation that happened in their, of one of their other districts they're working in, if that impacted any at all of the work in Adams 14. Um, I, I certainly haven't had any indication that that's been part of their scenario this last several months, but, um, if it does, if, just yes or no, I think is probably sufficient answer, so just curious.
Madam Chair, I can take that. Um, largely no. Um, there's been no impact. The staff are different from the, for the different districts, um, and are different plans. So there has not been any changes or impact on Adams 14.
Thank you. Thank, and thank you for the, the report, the update. It's, um, it was, it's encouraging in spite of all the obstacles everybody has had, um, in all regards and sometimes keeping status quo as much as possible is also wise, but not being afraid to be flexible and adventure outward just a little bit too. So I appreciate the work on your part and on all these districts and schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On slide number 12, I noticed Aguilar has, uh, written down, this is middle school and high school, and they've written down that they have a new literacy curriculum. I think that could be, I mean, even more problematic with all of the other changes that are taking place on how, uh, education is delivered. And I'm sure they came up with this before B.C., before COVID. So what, what I'm more curious about, and this is in the long run in the overview, is having in your next reports, and, and I don't mean within the next six months, I'm thinking more two, three years, of prior, uh, CMAS scores, let's just say, of the students that have been under watch or under evaluation with, with this and then, you know, how it's moving forward, just to learn how much we've lost overall specifically with these people on the accountability clock. And, uh, and it's, it's not to shame them or anything, it's to see how this distance learning, how some of these programs, I, I would think some of them might even improve, but I can't be sure till we have, you know, details of it. So, uh, first of all, the next time, maybe we can get an explanation of this new literacy program in Aguilar a, as part of their evaluation. That would be my only, uh, questions and concerns. Thank you.
Um, Board Member Rankin, I'd love to clarify, um, this might help. Uh, the directed action for Aguilar is both at the district level and the junior/senior, but, but set, but because they're such a small system, um, that directed action at the district, of course, covers K-12, um, along with the junior/senior high school in particular, and the new literacy curriculum is at the elementary school level. So they are, um, specifically implementing and going, you know, going through a read-approved, um, adoption of a new literacy curriculum at the elementary school level. But we can find out more information about literacy at the secondary... at the secondary level for you as well.
Well, I, I, I thought it was for the middle school and secondary school. But even if it's just for elementary, let's get an explanation of that and see what it is.
Yep, great.
Thank you. Board Member McCollough, thanks for your patience.
Quite all right. And I apologize for having left my hand up. I think it was up for a prior item and I forgot that I have to go in and lower it. So, my apologies. So, I just want to make sure, first of all, thank you to staff for the presentation and for the really comprehensive memos. I very much appreciate it. I have a question with respect to proposals to modify contracts on some of the, that relate to some of these board orders. And in particular, the memo concerning RISL brought forward for me some concerns that I wanted to raise. If it is the case that our board is expected to either endorse or approve a modification to an existing contract under a board order, I just want to be very clear about having expressed some concerns and some questions upfront. And in particular, I was struck by the concerns raised over MGT's staffing difficulties or competency concerns in Pueblo. And if MGT is, if they succeed in negotiating a continuation of their contract in terms of they're continuing to be the primary recipient of tax dollars, and if they are to act in a way that allows them to exercise what they term, quote, "executive authority," close quote, then I just want to make sure that we are crystal clear that there is not any kind of parsing out of responsibility with these proposed subcontractor relationships. If they are taking in the funding, they have to own the results. And I also want to make sure that I have a better understanding of exactly what, quote, "executive authority," close quote, means. I think there was some question as to what exactly that means. So, those are some of my concerns, but thank you for the report. And perhaps, perhaps we could get clarification as to whether this board is expected to authorize, endorse, or otherwise allow the modification of a contract. If that procedure could be made clear, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Board Member McCollough, that's excellent points. And I think you're picking up on some of the issues that we wanted to raise to the board, and I appreciate that. To clarify the process, which, you know, again, we, we don't yet have a process. And so, Lindsay and I are working to ensure that we do have something that can be consistent. At this point, the way that we are proposing this would work is that if there's a change to the pathway plan, so that plan that the district and the school compose together, that would likely, after discussions with our leadership and Attorney General's Office, probably that would be raised at another progress monitoring presentation like this. If the change rises to the level of potentially requiring a change to the order and, you know, acknowledging that those distinctions won't be black and white, at that point, we would like the school or district to come before the board and make a formal request that could be approved or disapproved. And then, at that point, there'd be a downstream effect potentially on the contract. So, you know, one lever of progress monitoring might be that the department and the commissioner are empowered to take a look at that contract after it's finalized and raise any additional concerns with the board. But I think otherwise, those negotiations would be between the partner or the management entity and the district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board Member Durham.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess for, for Lindsay, right now, we, we've been told and you all have tried to observe the changes that have taken place since March. And you appear to be somewhat optimistic about the impact of those changes. But reality is, there's no hard data because there was no, there were no assessments at the end of last year. And I would, would observe if there are no assessments at the end of this year, that people who started, who were sophomores last year will not have any assessments during their high school career. They didn't have any last year. If they don't have any as juniors, they generally don't take any as seniors because we don't, we don't test seniors. Although there might be some SAT results available. So, I think it's important that we try and get back on track with, with real assessments so that we have some, so we have some standard by which to, to measure success.
Thank you, Board Member Durham. I will say, I share your concerns about having high-quality data. Though, for this subset of schools, a number of them did administer still their spring assessments with all the caveats of how that happened. And I think we are, as we look towards progress monitoring this year, thinking very clearly about what metrics we could use to assess that, have we stayed the same? Have we slipped a lot? Have we slipped a lot, a lot, um, over the course of the year? And that is different based on different districts' context. But we do know that some of these schools still did administer that assessment in the spring to help them with fall planning and how to approach supporting students in the fall, and do anticipate still trying to figure out ways to administer assessments. I think they feel like if there is an element of in-person or hybrid instruction, we want to do that because we want to know where students are at. And they're also looking at other ways to use, just really deep, dive deeply into student work to understand what they're, they're doing. It is not state assessment, we recognize that. But I do think it helps us see on a school-by-school level, how are they doing over the next couple of years? Because those, those assessments will stay consistent.
Did you, did you review, did they, how did they administer their own assessments this last spring?
Yes.
For March, or did they do it remotely after March?
Both. Some, some schools got fairly lucky in that they had, you know, an eye-ready assessment for early literacy in March. And some still continued to do an end-of-year. And again, I place a lot of caveats on that. But they at least administered those assessments remotely and asked parents to help support students in, those are online assessments anyway, to administer those, to help teachers with their planning for the fall. I really, I think teachers really want to understand where students are and how to help close those gaps when they head into the school year. So, they felt it's still important that they do that in the fall.
Did you review that data? Have you been privy to it? Or is it just...
We haven't, no. I think that we could ask for some summary data there if, if we wanted to. I think schools were ready to share it and share that trend data. But they want to be careful about, the, the primary purpose of those assessments were to help teachers with understanding where students are and planning for instruction. But we did hear from principals that it was a good gauge of just, or where did we end the school year? How much did students get out of remote learning? So, I think we can work on that over the course of the year. What can we collect? And how can we summarize that data and have a sense of what's happening?
When they said it was a good gauge, did they mean it was a helpful assessment? Or were they commenting on the results?
That's a great question. I think they said it was a helpful. I got an example from, for example, from a principal that they knew they had a struggling reader. It was helpful to see, you know, in a, in a remote environment, what was that student able to do at the end of the year? And were they able to, it does help that teacher know how the student performed in that remote environment, but with a lot of caveats on that data. They can't control the testing environment. But it was on an, at least on a student-by-student or classroom basis, helpful to know what students were able to do at the end of the year.
Okay, so, if, if, for some reason, we don't do assessments this coming fall or this spring, I think we're going to have to start looking for alternative ways to try and measure success. And I, I hope we start thinking about that a little bit. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Again, I want to thank you for these detailed presentations. You guys did a great thing anticipating the questions that we might have, especially around what happened as a result of COVID and what are they expect, what are folks expecting to do? I think that it was really great. There's a lot of reading, but I, I enjoyed it. I want to go back to Board Member Scheffel's comment about having the management folks around at the time of the shift and now going forth. And I'm not sure the answer was, is it helpful? I mean, these are the, these are schools and districts where we know that our kids are struggling the most to the extent that we can measure that. Was, were we fortunate that at the time of this occurrence, of this pandemic, that we in fact had management folks to be working with those schools and those teachers? I mean, is, do you think it's a net plus? Or do you think it wouldn't have made any difference one way or the other? Either one or both of you.
Madam Chair, I would answer, I, I think, an example in one of the summer progress monitoring conversations with a principal from Pueblo. I, I would say that that principal felt strongly a net plus that the instructional expertise, if you, that she felt like her coach had provided, I think, the paralysis of how do I move forward, helped her get very clear about what are our beliefs around instruction? You know, let's keep it simple. What do we want to focus on? And as these struggling schools, as districts, were trying to coordinate activities all across the district, this added a layer of support for those schools that may be, may needed, may have needed that additional support. And districts were stretched quite thin. And that helped them navigate through, just get real-time support from them, from folks who had expertise that could be brought to bear when pivoting to online instruction. I do know that Adams 14 in particular really needed that added capacity and the leadership, that district management, that was extra hands, extra experienced leaders to help coordinate all the things that they needed to do. And that was truly a value add this spring as they were figuring out how to pivot to remote. But I would say some of the different providers provide different types of services, but were, were those our identified needs of those schools? And they picked partners with expertise in those areas. And so, they were able to really help and coach them through just a really evolving environment that spring.
Right. These are our tax dollars.
Right, right.
Small extra tax dollars. So, hopefully, they, indeed, were, were well spent. And I guess that's my other question. To the extent that we're going to have potential loss of progress, have you been thinking about whether we need to extend and grant through dollars, extensions for some of these, for some of these management companies to help districts as we hopefully are moving back to classroom instruction or blended instruction? Or has that not been a discussion yet? I worry a little bit about the money being, the grants being gone, the money's being gone, and really not being able to get to where we had hoped.
Madam Chair, I do know for most of these schools, so, for example, the four schools you saw last year, they do have additional school improvement funding already through the next two years. We have allowed them to apply for three years. So, it gives us a little bit of time, I think, to assess what extensions may be needed over the next couple of years. We are, are anticipating that, to Board Member Durham's point, we need to really think about what progress monitoring looks like this year so that when we come to next year, especially for those who would have been ending and would have had a rehearing or would have had some answer next year, we have robust data set to help guide what needs to come next for the board. So, I think that we can address funding and also need to think about what indicators we want to track over the next year or two to really assess progress and get districts' feedback on that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? Thank you very much. This was really excellent, comprehensive report. And I'll be looking at it again a few times from now on.
May I ask, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. This is your time. Go ahead, Board Member Flores.
You know, I wasn't kidding about the book and getting kids, getting books in, in kids' hands. I know that, that some of the public libraries are, are open. And, but it's, it's even difficult for me to get what I need. And so, I'm just concerned that, that something be done, that schools have some way of getting books in kids' hands. So, if kids want to, to, to read, you know, in certain areas, that, that, that books be available and that we ask the question, how are books being, how are we getting books in kids' hands?
That's a good question. That's a good question. Commissioner, are you familiar with anything in terms of the many programs that they are trying to do in the state?
Yeah, thank you.
Specifically, and specifically to these kids who, who really need to read.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just a second, Board Member Flores. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly, first of all, make sure we're linking up with our own library services and, and schools and districts, you know, because it is important. We do know that there's a proposal. It's not, you know, it's just a proposal that the legislature will probably be taking up next year, you know, to get books into kids' hands. But that, you know, that has not been determined yet and that has not been introduced yet. So, I, I know that folks are thinking along a similar line as you, Dr. Flores. I think at this point, you know, we need to make sure that we're just talking to the district and, and ensuring that they know how they can link students with library services and many, many linking them with the books they have in their schools already. So, if the kids aren't coming in, sending them home with, with books that are in, in classrooms already. So, we certainly take that to heart and will explore that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Colleagues, we now go into lunch and executive session. We will be back, we will be back from those at 12:20. So, Ms. Marombo, would you announce an executive session? And then, we'll take a short break before we have exec session.
And, and make sure to tell us.
Say that again.
Do we, we have to...
I didn't hear any of that.
Steve, you're kind of breaking up. Sorry.
Okay, well, do we, do we have to do, I mean, we don't have to change any of our, or go back in? Okay, that's all I needed.
Madam Chair, we will be on the same meeting link for executive session. We'll have executive session first, and then, we'll break for lunch and come back on the, the public record. An executive session has been noticed for today's State Board meeting in conformance with 2464023A CRS to receive legal advice on specific legal questions, including legal questions about potential adjustments to the board's accountability orders due to the pandemic pursuant to 2464023A2 CRS. The State Board will also discuss matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes, including any educator disciplinary matters on today's agenda pursuant to 2464023A3 CRS.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to convene into executive session?
Still moved.
Thank you. Any opposed? That motion passes. We will reconvene at 12:20. We are now in executive session. I propose a, colleagues, what, 15-minute break? I know it's not... I know it's not lunchtime, but it is break time. Does 15 minutes work? Yes, no? Heads are shaking? All right, so we'll be back.
Yes, please.
Back at five minutes after 11 for executive session. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Alive or live?
When we're live.
Item 10, the next item is a disciplinary proceeding, 2020 CPMR 71. Commissioner, do we need to go over this again, or are we ready for a motion?
I believe you're ready for a motion.
All right. Board Member McClellan, will you be good enough to make a motion, please?
Yes, I move to grant the applicant's career and technical education authorization.
It's a proper motion. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Maramba, would you be good enough to call the roll?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Flores?
Yes.
Board Member Goff?
Yes.
Board McCollum?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Shuffel?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
That passes 7-0.
Thank you very much.
And it wasn't the affirmative, right?
Yes, it was. What can I do to prevent this back noise that I'm getting when I'm speaking? Oh, it's gone now. Okay. Are you guys hearing it also?
Only when people have their mic unmuted when they're not talking.
Okay. It's working now. Thank you. Next item is a presentation of the CDE budget. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I am going to have Ms. Oaks give you a presentation just on where we're at right now. We know things, you know, move quickly and change quickly, but we wanted, we're just going to essentially have a standing budget item, probably every agenda item, so that we can keep you as up to date as possible. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Oaks.
Great, thank you. And I will share my screen with you all. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, so let me get on the slideshow. Hopefully you can now see this slide deck. So as Commissioner mentioned, we just wanted to give you an update. So starting just with a recap of last session, because last time when we updated, things were not quite finalized, I don't believe. So through the combination of the School Finance Act and the long bill, there were several reductions that were taken to CDE's budget, which in turn impacts school districts. So the final school finance reduction was 367 million. So that was just under 5%. And then there was a reduction to a series of other grant programs that totaled 110.5 million. And so if you kind of look at the funding, the state grant funding that goes out to districts outside of school finance, that was about 11% reduction in those programs. So eliminated 12 programs, reduced funding for 14, and then there was an increase to one program, the best COP lease purchase line. And so in your board docs, there is a detailed spreadsheet that outlines all of those budget reductions, if you want to go into that in more detail. So here's the eliminated programs. And many of these were, again, identified last session when we spoke. And then the reduced program funding, so there is again, a number of programs that were reduced to varying levels, including at the bottom, a CDE operational reduction, which was more internally. The rest of these were more external focused.
And what were they, Ms. Oaks?
The operational reductions.
Just all across the board, or reduced hiring, or is there any explanation at all that you can give?
Yeah. And so this was a reduction, it was a 5% general fund, personal services reduction, and that was taken across the board for all state agencies, including CDE. And so when you do the calculation, it equates to just over $300,000 for CDE. And what those are, they're through what's called potted lines, which is essentially like a pot of money. And so we have the flexibility of how and where those reductions are taken. And so we will be implementing that reduction through a variety of mechanism. The way CDE's budget is structured, we have programmatic lines that are both personal services and operating. And so there's a little maybe confusion with, it's called a personal services reduction, but we're taking it in sort of operational ways in many areas. So that's just by the nature of our sort of joint programmatic lines. So we're looking at those with some reduced travel budgets, because travel will be limited this year. Some reduced operating expenditures, some contractual savings, just savings that we were able to get through our annual contract negotiations. And so, and in some cases, we realigned staff's budget to what they were doing. We take a look at that on a regular basis. So just a combination of those, it won't be terribly disruptive to our operations. So luckily, we were able to absorb those without any major impact to our operations, other than, you know, the reduction in travel or operating expenditures.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we're not, I wanted us to give warning if we were going to reduce services to districts in any way.
Yeah, no, outside of not doing as much travel or training that we've, you know, haven't really planned for that yet this fiscal year. So some of those, we were able to achieve through those sorts of things that will be different, but it's not necessarily just because of the budget, but because of the entire situation that we're in with travel and so forth.
Okay.
And so then looking forward to the, you know, next year, as budgets always do, as we finish up the end of one cycle, we're starting the new cycle. And we do unfortunately anticipate that we need to make some more reductions. The budget, the state budget is anticipated to be potentially even worse next year. And so staff is really going through an internal assessment to look at our budget, looking again at our strategic organizational needs, getting input from you. I think we have a lot of your thoughts over the past months of knowing where your focus is. For example, we've wanted to protect REDACT and that early literacy and many other areas. So we're looking at that with that lens to say, well, what programs are really high priority for the board and the department's strategic plan, and try and protect those at all, you know, where feasible. And so we'll be looking at potential reductions that have the least negative impact on those. Normally, we come to you with potential decision items to request additional funding. In this current budget situation, that's really not feasible. And we're continuing to work in partnership with OSPB. We have worked with them to align how we coordinate with them, so it'll continue to be a strong partnership. But we do need to make some adjustments just to the timing to accommodate the state board decision-making process and your schedule with the monthly meetings. So we'll continue to keep you updated as we continue this analysis. And then when we also hear more about what the, you know, the economic forecast is for the state. And so the next update will be on September 20th or thereabouts. I don't have the exact date, but it's normally on the 20th. And then the following one will be on December 20th. So again, we'll know more once we have the economic forecast and what that means for budget balancing statewide, and then what that might mean for our budget and the funding for school districts.
So that's actually after our next board meeting?
Yes.
We'll be guessing a little bit. So I'll go down the line. Board Member McCollum, do you have questions? About the budget?
No, thank you, Madam Chair.
Board Member Goff?
No questions.
Board Member Shuffel?
No, I'm fine. Thank you. I understand. Thank you.
Board Member Rankin?
Just one little one, because you mentioned the REDACT, and you know, of course, I'm pretty addicted to that program. Are a lot of the checks and balances on some of the programs that we have, are those going to be made virtually, online? Is that how we're going to review that will save the money for the travel?
Yes, we're looking at that on a, you know, program by program basis, how we will interact. But a lot of those, we're doing, you know, virtual meetings such as this meeting instead of meeting in person and trying to facilitate that remotely and online. So we will still be doing the same types of outreach to districts and coordination and oversight. It'll just look a little differently.
Okay, thank you. If there's any changes, can you report back? Like, for instance, if you need to oversee something and you have to travel and that's not possible. I mean, that's really important when the department reviews some of these programs and how they're being implemented.
Yes, yep, we will continue to do that. And we're, you know, evaluating it as, we're working with the districts. We have had some travel that was deemed necessary, that we needed to go out. For example, assessors for the best program, you really can't assess a building without being there. So they've been doing that in coordination with districts where the district feels comfortable with them coming out. We've continued to do that. With school coming back, that may be changing. And so we'll just continue to evaluate that and make sense on an individual basis about when does it make sense, can we do this remotely, or when is it really necessary? And then obviously, we would, you know, honor the districts and the local public health, all of those types of things as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Board Member Flores?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions.
Board Member Durham? Board Member Durham?
No question.
You might, okay.
I can read lips now.
Yay! I worry a little bit about the programs that had to be eliminated, such as career counseling, social and emotional health program. Are there any entities out there that are helping to fill that gap?
Yeah, I can speak to that, Madam Chair. We have actually been doing a lot of work in partnership with other, like foundations, local foundations have invited me to speak at their, you know, meetings about what are needs of districts right now and schools. And so we have been able to share with them some of the, you know, at least state level funding that has been cut so that they can, you know, consider that. We also have lots of great partnership organizations across the state that are doing great work and supporting districts and stepping up in different ways. So it's not exactly the same, but we are trying to do that behind the scenes coordination and brokering to get districts what they need.
I feel better. Thank you. I know that some of these programs really were helpful for the schools, although none of them were by themselves all that much. Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Oaks. Any further questions, colleagues? All right. The next item, now I can see why Ms. Oaks is still, the next item is the certification for the July 2020 state share payments. Commissioner?
Yes, I'm just going to turn it right back over to Ms. Oaks. And I believe, Ms. Oaks, we briefed you on a few of the questions that came up this morning?
Yes.
That you could address those. Thank you.
Yeah, and I apologize, I was trying to be in and listen as much as I could, but I had some other meetings and I missed that part of the discussion, so I apologize. So as I understand it, there were some questions about the impact, the financial impact, as students might enroll in different school districts and what that might impact on districts. And there is that potential that it will impact districts if there is a large number of students that transition from one school district to another, given, you know, a variety of rationales. So there is, there will be an impact on that. But that five-year averaging provision that is built into the School Finance Act may help to mitigate that to some degree. And so what that five-year averaging is, is that it takes, the calculation is, it's the higher of either the current pupil count or this year's pupil count averaged with last year's pupil count, or this year and three years. So this year's and the prior two years. So it's either a one-year count or a two, three, four, or five-year average. And we take the highest of those averaging. So in, you know, a district that's a declining enrollment district, and year after year they're declining, they're going to be using a five-year average. In this case, if it was a district that's not declining enrollment, but it's a one-year reduction in the number of students that are enrolled, then it would likely be just a two-year averaging. So they won't go all the way down to the reduction in students, but it would be an average with this year's student count and last year's student count. So it mitigates it to some degree. Does that answer the questions that were out there?
So Mr. Durham just left, so that kind of...
Nope.
Do you have, did you have additional questions?
Yes, I do. So what we're voting on today is essentially based on last year's numbers?
Not quite. So what we're starting, so what you're voting on today is the calculations for the monthly payments from July through November. And this is based upon the School Finance Act. And what is included, the pupil counts that are included in here are based upon estimates that were developed by Legislative Council staff. And so last year's student counts, obviously, is a large component of what factors into their estimates. But then they do some projections to project what they anticipate student counts will be in the upcoming year. This year, they also incorporated an increase in the number of free lunch students, so students who are eligible for free lunch. There was an adjustment made by Legislative Council, assuming that with the economic situation, that more families may be free lunch eligible. And so they incorporated some of the information from the last two recessions to see what level of increase did we experience from those two instances, and that helped inform their projections for the free lunch count. So that is what these payments will be made on, is those Legislative Council estimates. And again, they do sort of their economist-type analysis. They do reach out to districts and get some input for the pupil counts. Given the timing with the free lunch counts, that was just looking back at that historical data. And then obviously, so we're only certifying, or you're only certifying July through November, and then we'll have the student October count. And so in December and in January, we'll true that up. And so I'll come back with the actual numbers. We get 99% of that or 95% of that done for the December payment, and then we do any final true-ups in January. And then that would be January through June, that are based upon the actual student counts from this October count, given that provision of the five-year, up to the five-year averaging as well. Given that provision of the, the five-year, up to the five-year averaging as well.
Does that answer your questions? Colleagues, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Does any of the COVID money get included in this? Or is that totally separate? And how does that figure in?
Yep, so that is totally separate from this. This is just the school finance formula, keeping, you know, the student counts and all of those different various factors. That's what goes into this. The CARES money, whether it be the coronavirus relief funds, or the GEAR, or the ESER, those are all separate from that.
And we have separate reports on those, I assume. Okay, thank you.
I think we have a report on that coming up, if I'm not mistaken. Tomorrow, is that tomorrow? Okay, tomorrow, thank you. You have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to certify the July 2020 state share payments to districts as required by state statute.
That's a proper motion to have a second?
Second.
Any objection? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oaks. Next item is, on the agenda is a presentation and vote on Metropolitan State University of Denver's request for reauthorization of its traditional educator prep program. Commissioner? Oh, wow.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. That looks nice. I wish we were all there. But really, we're gonna, we'll talk about this instead. So I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. O'Neill and Ms. Bivens, but I believe Dr. O'Neill is gonna kick us off.
Thank you very much, Dr. Antheis. Yes, we all wish we were on the beach. That changed very quickly. As we are gonna talk about the Metropolitan State University of Denver's reauthorization programs. So this afternoon, we're talking about two distinct programs for MSU. We're talking about the reauthorization of their traditional program. And we're talking about the reauthorization of their alternative preparation program. So I just want to set the stage a little bit for that. Today's agenda includes a review of the CDE strategic plan. The initiatives and where the educator preparation program reauthorization fits into that. So that we can talk a little bit about the specific emphasis around learning to read, because that's gonna become important in our conversation around reauthorization for MSU. So with that, we will move to our next slide and we'll talk a little bit about how the CDE strategic plan's high-level goals really outline and reflect the priorities of the State Board of Education. Specifically to educator preparation programs, there are two goals here that really stand out. Strong foundations, which focuses on ensuring all students are reading proficiently at third grade. And educators matter, because what we know is that teachers have a bigger impact on student performance than any other school-based factor. With regard to reading, research shows that proficiency in reading by the end of third grade enables students to shift from learning how to read to using reading skills to master the more complex subjects in fourth grade and beyond. In fact, students who cannot read, as we know, by the end of third grade are four times more likely to drop out of high school. By focusing on support for our youngest students and their educators, we can ensure more students are reading at grade level by the end of third grade. And then we're really building strong foundations for continued success in school for every student. Through the Read Act legislation and through your Board of Education rules and guidance. Teachers must have deep training and evidence-based strategies for teaching reading. Your Board of Education rules outline the five aspects to the science of teaching reading. Phonics, semantic awareness, vocabulary, reading comprehension, and fluency. Those five aspects will work together to create a strong reading experience for our students. It is through that lens that the CDE staff and outside reviewers conduct educator preparation program reviews. For those programs that serve new teachers who will be teaching students how to read. You've heard me say this before a couple of times, and it applies here to MSU Denver as well. Specifically regarding the work that we have engaged in with all of our, our educator preparation programs. It has been a little tough on both sides for us to talk about how deeply we have to go when we teach teachers how to teach students to read. And so it takes faculty members to understand the evidence-based practices in a very wide and deep way. And it takes that understanding that evidence-based reading strategies must be used as the core foundational method for all teachers to teach students how to read. It cannot just be used as an intervention one, or other strategies used when all other strategies have failed. It has to be the core. And I say all of these things because this is going to become really important when we talk about our recommendations for Metro State Universities. Authorization for their, for their traditional and their alternative preparation programs. So Ms. Bivens will point out in a few moments that we continue to collaborate with all of our preparation programs, including MSU Denver. To ensure that every teacher graduates with an elementary, early childhood, and in special education endorsement. That they have a very wide knowledge and a deep knowledge in evidence-based reading strategies. So with that preface and a little bit of underpinning, I'm gonna turn this presentation over to Ms. Bivens. To really walk us through the educator preparation review process and our recommendations.
Thank you, Colleen. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. As Colleen said, MSU Denver had both their traditional and their alternative programs up for reauthorization within months of each other. They actually requested that these processes happen simultaneously. So in conjunction with the Department of Higher Education for the traditional programs at MSU Denver. CD worked on two parallel reauthorizations, including forming two separate teams for the onsite visit that occurred. The initial submission of the program alignment to the State Board of Education endorsement standards started back in the summer of 2019. Those submissions were reviewed by outside peer reviewers in the fall of 2019. Couple areas came up through that initial submission and review process. One of those areas that was identified during that was questioning around the depth for the teacher candidates' training in evidence-based reading strategies. In both MSU Denver's elementary and early childhood reading courses. In both their traditional and alternative routes. Another area of wondering arose around the special education courses in MSU's traditional track. Based on the university submission and the peer review findings. CD staff worked with MSU Denver to adjust their site visit schedule. We added additional content-specific site team members. Two of those being reading content specialists from CDE. And also a special education chair from another Colorado university. Those additional team members, along with the already scheduled team. Were, were built in extra time to talk to stakeholder groups, including faculty and candidates, current and past. During the week of February 18th to 21st, this past spring. CD staff members, including two, those two additional reading content experts. One partner of our, from our Colorado Department of Higher Education. A district leader, two peer university leaders, and three peer alternative program leaders. Spent the week conducting stakeholder group meetings with MSU Denver leaders. Their faculty, current candidates, former candidates. And district partners, including hiring managers such as human resource directors, principals, superintendents, and special education directors. Those stakeholder conversations and more in-depth review during the site visit was able to address any concerns or questions we had around the special education courses that came from the peer review. Finding that all, any current concerns that came from those initial submissions were really from a lack of sufficient submissions. Or evidence rather than content of those courses not meeting standards. So that area of concern was addressed. As MSU Denver faculty prepared their alignment for endorsement standard submissions that were due back in the summer of 2019. Some faculty members actually self-identified the need for deeper alignment to and depth in the emergent reading strategies in their literacy courses. For example, the elementary faculty at MSU worked to adjust a reading course content and updated that course offering. And that was already in place by the time the state review team came for the site visit in February 2020. During our site visit, the faculty were very open to learning more about the state standards and expectations around the science of teaching reading and how they could continue to improve their content and delivering in the coming months for their teacher candidates. This has been seen by additional changes made since our spring site visit meeting, as we've continued to work with MSU. And we have already found things that will be in place, starting with this semester, this fall. Such as adjusting primary textbooks and readings that better align to the science of teaching reading in their elementary and early childhood courses. As well as identification and hiring of new faculty members who were hired specifically based on their experience around scientifically-based reading instruction that is needed in their programs. Although the presentation we're doing right now addresses both the traditional and alternative preparation programs at MSU Denver. We will need the board to vote today on these items separately. So the first recommendation from staff is for the traditional educator preparation program. Based on the state review process, CD staff recommends for the board's vote. Reauthorization of all but two of MSU Denver's traditional endorsement programs. With the exception of a conditional reauthorization of the elementary and early childhood education programs. And for MSU Denver to participate in another state review site visit in March of 2021. The conditions, as outlined in the July 2020 final reauthorization report that you have. For the elementary and early childhood education programs will include documentation aligned to the State Board of Education reading standards. And the additional site visit in 20, February 2021. Where we will check in with stakeholders to confirm that the changes that have already been put in place and continue to be put in place this fall by both leadership and reading faculty are being seen. The second recommendation from staff today for the board is for the alternative teacher licensure program. Based on the state review process, CD staff again recommends for the board's vote. Reauthorization of all but two of MSU Denver's alternative teacher endorsements. With those exceptions being a conditional reauthorization of the elementary and early childhood education programs. And for MSU Denver's alternative program to participate as well in a state site review visit in March of 2021. The conditions, as outlined in the alternative final reauthorization report dated July 2020 that you have. For the elementary and early childhood education programs will include documentation aligned to the State Board of Education reading endorsement standards. And again, that site visit in February 2021 to check in with stakeholders to ensure that the scientifically-based reading instruction that has been put in place and will be, continue to be put in place this fall is done so at a sufficient level. I'd like to end my part before we open up for questions and comments. Saying what Colleen said, which is that as CD staff, we're committed to working with MSU Denver and all our educator preparation program leaders. Faculty and pre-service teachers on the board's initiative to ensure every teacher who graduates with an elementary, an early childhood, or a special education endorsement. Have a wide and deep knowledge in evidence-based reading strategies. And can use those strategies to ensure all kids are proficient readers. We are committed to this process and we look forward to sharing more with you upcoming in, in future meetings. But we would be happy to take any questions or comments now.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'm just gonna go down the line and you can bring forward your questions. And if, if you still have questions, for example, Board Member Rankin had some this morning. Let's go ahead and throw them, throw them out right now, since we have the experts here. Board Member McClellan?
No questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Goff?
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Sorry.
Okay. Board Member Sheffield?
Thank you for the presentation and for your commitment to the process. I know it's painstaking, a lot of detail. And it, you know, you wanna be affable with universities and encouraging them and obviously respecting their expertise. As you do this work, do you have a sense that we're getting away a little bit from the ideological aspect and shifting more to a focus on research? And what we know based on large meta-analyses and large research projects? Do you have a sense that we've kind of moved away in the universities from some of the ideology? Or what is your thought on that?
Thank you, Dr. Sheffield. I, I'll certainly add my opinion. Mary, please feel free to add as well. I think what we're seeing is a stronger shift towards, definitely towards the research-based practices. And a move away from some of the philosophical conversations that we have around reading. And that really is the shift we've been looking for for institutes of higher ed and all of our educator preparation programs. Because that's what the board has really identified in our Board of Education rules as their, their scientifically evidence-based reading practices. And so I think we are seeing more people come to the table for that. And we appreciate all of the, this support that we've had from our educator preparation programs and their, our deans of education are, are stepping up at this point and asking for our support. And we appreciate that a lot.
All right, well, thanks again for the work and the presentation. I really appreciate it.
Mary, do you have any question, any comments?
You know, I just wanna echo that, but I would add one thing, Dr. Sheffield, that I think you'll appreciate, which is, Colleen said it well. And I also think that we're seeing a shift away from believing philosophically that this is about intervention. And really that the understanding that this is core instruction. And I truly wanna thank all our partners at CDE who we partner with. We partner with so many of them in the other units, but also the board. Because I think the message is clear of, of the commitment we have at CDE and from the board. And, and so it helps that as we continue to push gently, but appropriately. So, so I think we're seeing some shifts. So thank you.
All right, that's a wonderful aha, because we don't wanna be addressing the problem after the fact where we have to intervene, right? Dress it upfront so the, so that the gaps really don't ever occur. So thanks for that. That's great.
Board Member Rankin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you both for this great presentation. This is the first time that I've really felt the details of the Read Act are coming forward. And it sounds like you are doing a great job of explaining what this means to higher ed and to the teachers that are now going out into the field. And they will be coming up against teachers that have not had this education or the aha moment, as Dr. Sheffield says. So I can't thank you enough. One thing I would like to mention, and I didn't print out this document, but I wrote a note. Page one of, of MSU's proposal there that was in Board Docs. I would like to see the word "research" changed to "evidence-based" or "scientific evidence." Something that aligns more with the Read Act. And, and we can go back and dig that out later, but that was something that hit me when I read it earlier. Also, legally, we cannot review these less than once every five years. Or more frequently, I guess, is the way I should say that. So I'm wondering if we say, okay, we have reviewed it in 2019, but we're gonna check back in 2020. So are we legally, can we do that? That would be the first thing. And then you mentioned to ensure a sufficient level of understanding. I, I, I need a definition of sufficient. When you go back and look at it. I, I think, as was stated earlier, we need to start out with this being very tight and according to the Read Act. For people to be successful at doing it and, and doing it correctly down the line. And so I think we need to be very clear about, yeah, we see what we have to, what you have to teach now and you understand that. But where, where is this sufficient level of understanding? And I think that's where you go in later and evaluate them, but I don't know that throughout those five years. I don't wanna come back five years from now and be starting from scratch again. So that's just kind of my input on that.
Well, Madam Chair, I would like to answer, just address really quickly the legal authority that the State Board of Education has, if that's okay?
That's a good idea.
We, you do have that legal authority given to you by statute. So there are three outcomes.
You do have that legal authority given to you by statute, so there are three outcomes that you can have. You can either approve those endorsements, and that means you approve them, you can either conditionally approve them, which is what we did today, which says we're going to conditionally approve these, and then we're going to come back and visit. So that gives the State Board basically the right to send staff back in to say, hey, take a look at this again. And then you have, of course, the authority to not approve them. And not approve basically means that they will shut down those endorsement programs, and they will not let anybody else in. So there's some additional nuances to that, but you can have the statutory authority to do that.
But we're not conditionally approving all the programs. I think what Mrs. Rankin said is, what if we come back three years from now and have some real concerns? We don't really have the authority to do much.
So, similar to, that's a good question. So similar to what we did with another university a little bit earlier in the last couple of years, what we end up doing and coming back is conditionally approving again. And so when we come back to the board, we say, you know what, we said we'd go visit in another year, we did not find what we were looking for, you have the authority, board, to continue to conditionally approve. The difference between not approving and conditionally approving endorsement areas and specific endorsement areas really is that they can still allow applicants or educators to come into those endorsement areas, so I can still enroll pre-service educators into elementary education with a conditional approval. If you do not approve it, then you cannot enroll any individuals into those endorsement paths. So what happens is, you do have the right to just kind of keep coming back until you are sure that the Board of Education is sure that the university or the educator preparation program has met your requirements.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Flores, do you have questions?
Yeah, you asked me already, and I said I didn't.
That was another item. Board Member Durham?
No, it was this item.
Is this the point where we wanted to talk about benchmark from this morning's comments? No.
Probably not. Probably tomorrow, when we go through the rubric for choosing acceptable programs, if that's okay.
You bet.
Anything else, Mr. Durham?
Nope, thank you.
I have one more question.
I cut you off, and I apologize.
No, no, you didn't cut me off. It didn't come up till just a second ago in my head. But if we conditionally, if we approve this conditionally, and then you, I appreciate the input, we can conditionally approve it again and again and again and again, but it's in the five years from now that we can not approve them if we have conditionally approved them and they haven't met the standards for which it is we're looking. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's actually a really good question. Because you've conditionally approved now, if we bring it back in a year, you have the authority to say, no, we're not going to approve it. So we've separated, what the statute should allow us to do is separate each of the endorsement pathways, so that you don't have to just approve the program carte blanche, you can approve individual endorsement areas. So you would still have the authority to come back and say, no, you didn't meet those requirements, or yes, you've met those requirements, and we'll remove the conditional approval.
And so that leads me to one more question. I'm sorry, Dr. O'Neill, but one of the things in the READ Act is that reading has to be basically taught in all other subject areas, and it really should go from K-12, as you know, we just are starting out with K-3. Does MSU and do these colleges for education, do they understand that this is not a standalone subject that you teach so many minutes, even if you're teaching it the right way a day, that it does permeate every other area of education at the elementary level?
Thank you for bringing that up, because yes, they do, and they are working more diligently to kind of infuse that into all of their educator models for each content area. So how do I think about reading and writing when I'm talking about social studies? How do I think about the core of reading and writing when I'm talking about math? And so they're starting to have more overlap into those. I will be honest, we have focused very intently on elementary, early childhood, and special education, and teaching reading skills, and then moving kind of upwards into that, a much larger scale as we work with our universities, and our EPP programs. They're definitely coming to the table, saying, if you don't have the basic foundational reading skill, it's really hard to comprehend information in any other subject area.
Yeah, I totally understand that. So what we're doing really, as you just said, is focusing on that early childhood, but the quote-unquote "traditional," which we use in this MSU program, that we are automatically approving, does not have reading at this point integrated in the other subject areas. Is that correct?
Oh, go ahead, and let Ms. Vivian Danford, because I think she has a better case on that.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. O'Neill and Board Member Rankin. I would say, actually, in many ways, the State Board standards around reading across curriculum, and you know, is being met at a deeper level already. Not, sometimes related to the READ Act, is refinement, but actually their standards, the areas we identified them below standard was not in that area. We were far more concerned about the depth and breadth, and as I mentioned before, that this is not intervention strategies or a strategy, but it is the strategy for teaching reading to a group of six-year-olds in first grade, right? So I think that focus is the areas we're recommending them for conditional reauthorization, specifically.
Okay, thank you. You've answered my questions, and I appreciate it.
You bet.
May I ask a question, Madam Chair, or is it the wrong time?
No, no, go ahead.
Mary, could you just, could you remind us, and maybe this isn't the right time, of the language in the law that says that, that at all grade levels, in all content areas, they have to also be teaching reading? So I thought we stepped away from some of that, but I'd have to go back and remind myself of the language. I just remember when that was tried earlier, I think under, maybe it was Read to Achieve, or maybe, I can't remember. It was really problematic, because people felt like, I'm not really going to be teaching kids to read in my ninth-grade lit class. I'm aware of what it means to teach reading, I certainly want to be teaching vocabulary, I certainly want to be, you know, teaching comprehension approaches, but really, am I going to teach phonics in ninth grade if I'm a lit teacher? I mean, I don't think it says that.
It does not. You were right, and it's actually in your State Board reading rules around reading across the curriculum, and I absolutely would say it's exactly as you described it, and that again is why we felt they were meeting standard in those areas.
Yeah, because I think almost all AICs, I'd be very surprised if they weren't doing that.
I cannot speak to one. Yeah, that isn't correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the reauthorization of all but two of Metropolitan State University of Denver's traditional educator preparation endorsement programs. The two excluded programs will be conditionally, to be conditionally approved are elementary education grades K through six and early childhood education ages birth through eight.
Thank you, that's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Maramba, would you call the vote, please?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Flores?
Yes.
Board Member Goff?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Sheffield?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
The pass was seven zero.
Thank you. So the next item is actually a continuation of this item, and unless you have some questions about the reauthorization of the alternative teacher license programs, I would entertain a motion for that. This is again, MSU accreditation of their program.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the reauthorization of all but two of Metropolitan State University of Denver's alternative teacher licensure endorsement programs. The two programs excluded are conditionally approved, and are elementary education grades K through six and early childhood education ages birth through eight.
Thank you, that's a proper motion. Do I have a second?
Second again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Dr. O'Neill, can you tell me real quickly what these two programs are? I'm always amazed when there's a university that has the alternative prep program.
Sure, absolutely. So the traditional program is their four-year traditional program, so they enter in, you know, more without a bachelor's degree. Many of our universities have recognized that there are career changers that are really interested in coming back into the educational landscape. Those are the individuals that already have a bachelor's degree that want to go on to continue and get their teaching license. So that's where the alternative preparation programs come in, so they kind of have side-by-side complementary programs, and we've seen more traditional programs start to adopt an alternative model so that they can offer both pathways across the state of Colorado, especially as we've had teacher shortages geographically across the state. So we've seen a little bit of an increase in that over the last several years.
So are these like the Master's Plus, only this is not a Master's?
They actually can offer multiple avenues for that. So many of our alternative preparation programs, I think there's 10 out of the 24 alternative programs are actually from institutes of higher education, and some of them offer a Master's degree and the teaching license, some of them offer only a teaching license, and some of them offer, of course, you can get your Master's degree and go on to get your EDS or an EDD or a PhD. So it just depends on which programs have those opportunities. I will tell you that most of our institutes of higher education are so close to that 24, to those Master's degree levels, that often our alternative candidates finish those.
Okay, thank you. I was just curious, are there no other questions? Ms. Maramba, would you call the vote, please?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Flores?
Yes.
Board Member Flores?
Yes.
Board Member Goff?
Yes.
Board Member McClellan?
Yes.
Board Member Rankin?
Yes.
Board Member Sheffield?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
The pass was seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a rulemaking hearing regarding proposed amendments to the rules for the administration of the standardized calculation for counting student attendance and truancy, 1 CCR 301-78. A hearing to promulgate these rules was made known through publication of a public notice in the Colorado Register and during the July State Board of Education meeting. Commissioner and staff prepared to provide an overview, please.
Sorry, my little mute thing is on delay. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to turn this over to Melissa Bloom.
Hi, Melissa, come on.
Hi, good afternoon, members of the board, Madam Chair. In presenting information related to a rulemaking hearing for 1 CCR 301-78, Rules for the Administration of the Standardized Calculation for Counting Student Attendance and Truancy. As a reminder, these rules were noticed with the Secretary of State's office in June, and staff provided information on these rules to the board at the July meeting. The proposed amendments seek to clarify the department's policy on instructional time and student attendance for the 2020-21 school year. Specifically, the amendment changed the requirements such that districts are only required to record attendance once daily, and clarified that for the 2020-21 academic year, for any period during which students are participating in remote learning due to public health and safety requirements, students may be recorded as present when participating in that remote learning. Further, districts should record absence as an attendance consistent with the district's attendance policy as it applies to remote learning in these situations. Finally, the rules make some technical changes to the names of data collections to align with current practice and current collection titles. No public comment was received on these proposed amendments prior to the hearing. Accordingly, CDE staff is recommending that the board vote to adopt the proposed amendments to 1 CCR 301-78. If the board is not unanimous today, a second vote will be scheduled for the September meeting. Staff are available to answer any questions we may have on the proposed changes.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions, colleagues? We have no one to testify.
I have a question.
Board Member Rankin, please.
We have been hearing, I mean, everybody's been hearing about all the different ways that districts are counting attendance, and I have to say, I've heard and read about a lot, but I even heard more this morning when people were discussing it. Is there a way that we can find out what the districts are doing? I mean, they all are going to have a different way of counting per pupil count in October, and I did hear this morning, you could not be counted, the same pupil could not be counted in two different districts, although some students can cross district lines in order to have an opportunity at a distance-based other way of learning. I would like to know how the districts are going to account for this October count. Will we get that?
Madam Chair.
Please, go ahead.
So, Board Member Rankin, I think you bring up a good point in that, as for the purposes of October count, CDE staff will receive the information on attendance in the same way. Our policy on instructional time and student attendance for the 2020-21 school year, this means that districts can count and track and record that attendance differently, but the way that CDE receives it will be the same, so it's not a difference in how CDE is monitoring it. That said, I think CDE staff is starting to look into, and we are also hearing from the field, that they are interested in the different ways that, you know, other districts are looking at tracking attendance, or perhaps altering their attendance policies for the coming year. So I think as a department, CDE staff and working with some of our other partners are looking at a way to collect some of those best practices to eventually share with the board and other districts to kind of get that information out there.
I can appreciate that, but I still believe that even, I mean, I don't think it should be extra work for you, but this is a unique situation, and when we have this virus that allows certain flexibility, but in other ways, no, we don't want to have the flexibility, this is accepting their flexibility, but I'm just saying, I'd like to know what it is, and I think that's only right to be somewhat accountable. And if they have reason to, I mean, have a question about it, but then define why they did it a certain way, I think that's going to be, in the long run, the right thing and safer for them to do too. And it's only right that we look at this stuff, since we're the ones passing the money through. I think that's imperative that we see how this is being counted in every district. That's my input on that, and maybe we need another month to get more information on how that can be done, I'm not sure, but I would like, I would definitely like to see some accountability there.
Understood, and I think that that's a great point. I will note that these rules don't, and the purpose never has been to monitor that attendance, it's more informative for districts in terms of how they go about calculating attendance for the purpose of truancy and other calculations. So there's a bit of a distinction between these rules and then how we implement that policy on instructional time and student attendance for the 2021 school year, but I think your point is very well taken, that it's going to vary greatly across districts, and it is definitely something that we will need to keep our eye on.
Board Member Durham?
Board Member Durham, your mute microphone.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Ms. Bloom, the, I did, as I Ms. Bloom, the, I did, as I looked through these rules, part of it relates to how you count truancy and apparently putting in some different standards on truancy. But in terms of the actual count, and particularly the count for financial reimbursement, I have a hard time getting by that the student is either there or they're not there, and there are only two choices. And yet, you're talking about the different ways in which we're somehow going to allow districts to determine whether the answer is yes, they're there, or no, they're not there. So could you describe some of those innovative practices for me?
Sure, Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I do think some of what we're hearing from districts in terms of how they plan to count attendance in remote learning environments, for example, it may be if they're logged on to an online learning platform, if it's not specifically online learning, it may be as, you know, turning in certain assignments on a certain timeline. So I think it varies based on the way that districts plan to implement remote learning as defined in their definition of educational process adopted by their local board.
So so are you saying that we could actually have a district, say they were doing remote learning, post an assignment on a bulletin board or something similar, and if it's turned in a week later, that student is presumed to have been present for all of that week?
So again, I think this is something that would have to be defined by the local board in their attendance policies and their definition of educational process as it pertains to remote learning.
Define it, but we're reimbursing attendance. I don't know how we can in good conscience allow a local board that level of latitude to determine whether or not they in fact have a student. Because what you just what you just described is that they're going to measure attendance based on whether or not an assignment is turned in, is no measure of attendance at all, and we ought to reject that.
So I completely hear your concern, I do think there's a, I'm sorry.
Are we, are we allowing local boards to institute the policy you just described and count that student for financial reimbursement?
Thank you.
Do you want to weigh in here?
Yeah, thank you. So remember, in terms of student October, the attendance requirement is either that the student is in attendance on on October 1st, or if they miss attendance for whatever reason and are not there on October 1st, they would have to attend school at least one day prior to that, so sometime in August or September. And then they'd need to return back in attendance one day within 30 days of the count, so before Halloween. So in terms of attendance, it's never been defined, either in statute or rule what attendance normally means, because historically, I think it's been pretty clear, it's normally a student in front of a teacher in a classroom. What we wanted to do through our guidance is to have local boards define that remote learning could be included as part of their instructional hours, both in terms of their the requirements for each school, which is typically the 1,080 hours for a secondary level, as well as to count those remote learning times for funding purposes. So in terms of, the local boards would have to define what that remote learning is going to be counted, and what and describe what that remote learning looks like for this upcoming year, not not ongoing, but just when we have this pandemic.
Let me interrupt you right there. Is that definition that they have to, that they turn in an assignment sometime before Halloween?
So that would be, so first you decide what?
Acceptable definition to us.
It would be based upon the local board, and so, you know, I think a lot of districts are looking at this type of a classroom situation, and that that could count as attendance if the student is participating in this type of thing, or logging into an online platform. In cases where it's a remote district, where they may not have the broadband capability and students don't have this ability to do online, either, you know, this type of face-to-face online or an online platform, they may have to rely on packets in some cases just because of that technology gap in their community. And so they might define remote learning as the paper-based packets. And so it's possible that in that situation, their local board may say, remote learning includes paper-based packets, and if you complete the five days of assignments, that that would be five days of attendance, potentially.
Yeah, I can just weigh in a little bit. We did, you know, we have shared this a couple times. We really are trying to allow for some pretty challenging flexibility here. We do have some districts that do not have any access to internet still, or or remote-based learning. And so in those cases, you know, unfortunately, this really, you know, you drive to the school, you pick up a packet with all the textbooks and information, and then you go home, and then you work on those things, and sometimes the parent can't come back every day. Those are fewer and further between, but that was happening in the spring. And so we did try to allow for that, that there's there's these different challenges. I totally hear what you're saying, that it's not ideal, but in some of those cases, again, which is why we were trying to make sure the local board would clearly define what they mean. But we could probably, you know, you know, think about how we, I don't know, collect that information, or something to that effect.
Well, let me try and rephrase it. I'm only concerned, I'm only concerned about the prevention of what I would characterize as fraud. That is, counting students who are really not enrolled. And and I, believe me, I appreciate the, that we need to provide as many of the kinds of flexibilities as you just described, Dr. Anthes, I think that's important. But I think we're going to see, I think we're going to see declining declining enrollment on a statewide basis when they finally get around to counting for a variety of reasons. One is some parents who still want to take the risk of sending their kids to school. Two, there are going to be some of those learning pods and homeschooling that are going to be going on. And and I meant to remark at the time that I hope we're not doing anything to discourage and encouraging the Department of Health and Social Services not to discourage some of these innovative techniques, even though that means these kids are not going to be counted in anybody's count. But or but I think we're also going to see a number of children probably enrolled in the traditional proven online settings, where they're, where they have, you know, track record along curriculum, all kinds of things. And I think that may diminish the enrollment in some of the some of the districts. So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to avoid, and I don't care how they count attendance once we're, once money's not not a reason to overcount. So I think, I don't, you know, the first time I heard these arguments about this, I was, I guess, you know, with the initial description of if you're just discounting attendance for truancy purposes, I really don't much care how they do it in the environment or, school boards should be able to do what they want. But when they want, when they want the reimbursement check from the state, the only the only reimbursement I want to give them is for students that are actually there, enrolled, and learning something. And and it doesn't sound like to me this is an adequate level of control, that we're going to, you know, if a board tells us that, you know, a kid stood on his head on the second of October, that that we're going to count him. It's got to be, we got to do better than that. And and, you know, turning in an assignment now and then in the month of before Halloween, you know, I mean, the districts have the opportunity to play tricks on on the state, and they're going to get treated. So if we want to just say this is trick or treat, do whatever you want, you'll still get treated, fine, I'm not going to vote for it. So we got to, we got to come up with something a lot better than what we have here. I mean, I don't think, if, I think there needs to be a stringent review of all 179 submissions of what attendance is. And it gets back, for the purposes for counting for reimbursement, there are only two answers, he's there or he's not, period.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Do you think, Ms. Oaks, can I just ask you, in terms of our internal controls, do we have the authority to collect that information now, or do we need to add something in these rules so that we have the authority to collect that, you know, collect more information about exactly what's happening?
Yeah, these rules are really separate and apart from the attendance related to school finance. And so that was guidance that we had provided. These rules really speak to that post-attendance on the average daily attendance and how that is reported at the end of the year. So.
Is average daily attendance used for reimbursement?
No, nope. And so these rules do not relate necessarily to school finance and eligibility for funding other than attendance is a topic in both. So in terms of.
We get into the discussion of prior to August 1st, or prior to October 1st and after October 1st. I guess I got there because, I guess, I asked the question earlier on about, about how you're going to do that. But it doesn't, to these rules.
Right, and I apologize if I wasn't clear initially in that. So these rules are about just the reporting at the end of the year on attendance throughout the end of the year. And so it, they aren't related to this, the funding purposes. And so we have.
Then I think we revisit these funding issues down the road. But then let me change, as long as it doesn't relate to funding, let me go to a question that I think I did submit, I don't, Ms. Tolson, did I send you some suggested amendments to this? Did I get that to you? Right, my memory completely failing me.
Well, and and mine was erased by going on vacation, is prone to happening. That, it is not ringing a bell, and you very well could have, and I'll apologize if I've.
Well, I, no reason to apologize, I did it. But the question I had, and I think I raised with you, Ms. Bloom, was whether or not this was an opportunity to clarify these rules in terms of the authorities of, and include BOSEs in these, in these rules as a, because sometimes they function as a local board, they authorize things, and so, and the rule, because the statutes are generally clear that they can do it, but our rules have omitted BOSEs, is this a time to start adding the BOSEs into these rules?
So I think we were discussing the BOSEs as it pertained to our other set of rules, that's up later today, the school finance rule, as opposed to these, the attendance rules, I know these two are kind of intertwined and they're, the topics are definitely related, but they are two distinct rule sets. So here, I think the obligation and the way the statute was laid out is specific to school districts. I'll let Ms. Tolson speak to whether whether or not it's fully appropriate to include BOSEs differently here. But I think our rules reflect kind of how how the statute is set up with regards to these, to these provisions.
And I am having a bit of a eureka moment, you did send me, I know, some suggestions regarding BOSEs, but I'm like Ms. Bloom, I was trying to remember if those related to the other set.
By the other set, you mean 1402?
Yes, so.
1401, I, I got these out of order. So 1401 is the Administration of the Public School Finance Act. We're, we're going there, we're not there.
We're doing 1401 now.
We are not, we're doing 1402. That's my mistake, Steve, sorry.
It's okay. I'm glad to know I'm not completely losing my mind.
Well, let's not talk about that.
Close, but.
No, it's my mistake.
Okay, so, God, all right, I apologize, because I was somehow missed the fact we were out of order. So, all right, so so these rules don't have anything to do then with what I sent Julie on looking at BOSEs, correct?
We're getting there next, so hold on to your thoughts, please.
So so I just want to say that, I think I got it, okay, fine. All right, so I have nothing else to say about these rules.
Any chance we can have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm happy to make a motion. I also wanted to just make a quick comment before I make the motion, and that is that I, while I very much appreciate Mr. Durham's interest in maintaining integrity in these numbers, I also am torn about wanting to make sure that we're not setting forth rules that will discriminate against some of our rural districts through no fault of their own, simply because they, some of them have very difficult internet connectivity challenges due to their geography. So with that, I move to approve the proposed rules for the administration of the standardized calculation for counting student attendance and truancy, 1 CCR 301-78, as published in Board Docs.
Thanks, that's a proper motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more comments, colleagues?
I had a quick comment.
Please, Board Member Shuffel.
My only concern is that some of the feedback I got anecdotally from folks is that after about a month or six weeks of the remote learning, that there was like a 50% attendance rate, and in at least some contexts and districts. And so, I mean, that's, that's just instructionally devastating for kids. And my question is, is there anything that could go in these rules or is implied in these rules that would help plug that hole? Because while we want to be flexible and we want to let districts, you know, meet their own needs and use definitions that make sense based on their, what they have available technologically, we sure don't want, you know, kids really not attending half the time or half the students. Is there, is there anything in here that would help with that, or is there anything we could put in these rules that would help?
Madam Chair.
Please, go ahead.
So Board Member Shuffel, I will know, I don't know about these rules particularly, but I do want to point out that there are statutory requirements in place for districts to monitor, monitor their attendance procedures, to identify children who have significant number of excused absences, and to work with the local community and the children's parent to address those underlying issues. So that provision is already in statute and something that districts are required to do already, and that wouldn't be changed by, these rules are the proposed amendments, that statutory requirement remains intact and would also apply in these kind of remote learning situations.
So if if what I heard anecdotally was true, how could it be true? Just that the districts, how could that happen? Was it just that people were unorganized in spring because we didn't anticipate this challenge, and now we're going to be more organized? Or how could that happen, that, you know, kids are just not logging in, they're just, they've gone AWOL, we don't know where they are? How could that happen?
Sure, and I understand, of course, I'm not disputing the fact that it did happen or that those stories weren't true. I do think that probably as districts, you know, change to a different learning platform, there were a lot of things to learn and to understand in terms of how they were going to monitor that attendance and how they were going to focus on those reengagement efforts as they're required to do under statute. So I think, as you mentioned, part of it was probably. So I think, um, as you mentioned, part of it was probably, um, a learning curve, um, as far as kind of what's happening in the field. I'm not, um, you know, we'll see how it goes, but I just did want to note that there are those statutory requirements, um, still in place.
So Madam Chair, could you jump in here?
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So I think what I'm hearing, and, and I think you're making really, really good, strong points, is that in this new world of COVID, you want some additional information that maybe we haven't collected in the past uh, because of the new circumstance. And I, I hear that. I mentioned some of that at my commissioner report, that we're trying to do some of that collection. However, how about we take, the, the staff take this feedback back and we look at the different types of rulemaking that we have and figure out maybe where some options would be for you to... Because I do think we would need some authority and some direction on what you would want us to, uh, collect and, and the frequency and the, the pace of that and all of that. Um, but I think we might need to do a little homework to figure out where that might fit best, which set of rules and what the authority is. We may need to work with Julie a little bit on that, too. Um, so, uh, could we, can we put that as a homework assignment for us for the September board meeting?
Sounds reasonable.
Yeah, I, yeah, I didn't, I don't want it to, to come across as suggesting that, that in any way that rural districts who are faced with unique circumstances, shouldn't have the ability to use whatever set of solutions makes sense and are at least to some extent verifiable, uh, on, on, on an audit kind of basis. But I, what I'm more concerned about is, is, uh, frankly, urban districts, the urbanized districts, and like most of those in El Paso County, that, uh, simply, simply are going to count kids that are as a, online that is a practical matter, uh, may not really be there. And I think, I think the anecdotal information that Dr. Scheffel heard, is probably similar to the anecdotal information I've heard and I've expressed, I think at the previous meeting where if you, I've not talked to a lot, but I've talked to five junior and senior type students, uh, at local high schools who I happen to have some social interaction with. Do a person, uh, they couldn't have been less complimentary about online learning and their experience. Put it mildly. I mean, they, in practical terms, it was a bad joke.
Excuse me, Mick. May I, um...
Let him finish. Let him finish.
They didn't feel they wanted, and how much effort they put into it, I'm not sure, because I think they could have been among those that, that Dr. Scheffel talked about who may have not, not shown up online, even bother to show up online every day. So I think the only thing I, the only final statement I want to make is, you know, if, if they're enrolled legitimately, they should be counted for reimbursement purposes. But I think as, given what we know about online education today in the average district, I would at least be remissed in not putting a warning label on this for students and for parents. That this may be the best there is to offer, but don't presume it's very good. Because at least based on the evidence so far, it isn't. And, uh, and I'll let it go at that, but, but this appears to be the opportunity to make that case that I appreciate the fact that everybody's doing the best they can and they're working hard and everything goes with it. But the reality is, uh, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And right now, the evidence is, this doesn't work. And particularly doesn't work for elementary kids. So for us to, to try and put lipstick on this thing is, I think, a serious mistake.
May I say something now?
Board member, yes, Board Member Flores, please go ahead.
Thank you. Well, I know that in, in Denver, uh, kids were not able to continue on with, uh, some kids were not able to continue on to the sec, to the regular grade. So they were pulled back or put, they had to stay in place. And I know this because I've been working with a family and trying to, to help here. You know, so they can, um, and, and it happened that they just stopped, um, going online. And so, uh, the principal just said, no, you can't go on to the next grade. So it's not all what you think. I mean, and these classes were online and kids had to respond to questions. I think it was a Socratic method that was being used. And so if they didn't respond, didn't show up, or they couldn't be seen, I mean, they, they weren't counted. And consequently, they were not passed on to the next grade. So it's not the same everywhere. If kids didn't attend in Denver, I think in most of Denver, they just were not counted.
So, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board, it sounds like there's enough, uh, confusion and questions about this. Um, but unless my staff tell me there's like serious urgency on this, um, I, I don't... It might be a good idea to table these two, um, until September for us to do a little regrouping on some of the feedback that you're giving us. Um, I think that that would probably be the smart move. I know you have a motion on the table, so you would have to, uh, deal with that motion. Um, but that would be my suggestion at this point.
Rebecca, you're on mute.
I can withdraw my motion.
Thank you. So we're going to pass on this until next month? Colleagues? Okay, so my apologies...
Madam Chair, I just have one more thing to say that, um, if we are passing on this and it comes back in the same format, I'm going to be, I'm going to tell you upfront, I'm going to be a no vote. So I don't, uh, I don't know how long we can kick this can down the road, but, um, maybe if they have some information, we should get it far enough in advance that we can at least straighten things out and understand, uh, why we're going to vote the way we're going to vote.
Jane?
So Board Member Rankin, can I get a little more clarity from you on what, what the sticking point is for you, what you would need to see in terms of clarity?
Well, I guess, I guess there would be very good clarity if we said, turn in a paper as to how you're going to do your October count and then we'll give you the money. I bet we'd get them. I mean, I, I just think giving out money on a daily count of students when we have so much discussion and, and angst about how different districts are counting students, um, I, I just think we need to have more clarification directly from the district. And I'm not saying it's an up or down vote. I'm just saying they should have some idea because they did go through the spring. They did have difficulty, from what I've heard, and I also have heard this through superintendents, the same, same problems. So, I mean, maybe we've learned from this and there's a different way to attack it, and they are doing that. Even if it's a one-page paper, if they don't have time to put that together, that's a lot of money we're giving out without any accountability. That's where I'm coming from.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Rankin. Just to be sure, and this is part of the clarity I think we need. We, we probably need to clean up our presentation a little bit just in terms of which rules are which and which, uh, which rules are articulating, uh, payments versus which rules are articulating just their attendance policy. And so we'll, we'll try to get clearer on that and, and present it in a way that, um, that we understand this can be confusing.
And if it can be very clear, I'll know whether I should vote no on 1401 or 1402.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Board Member Durham, you're on mute. Yep.
I'm sorry. Uh, and could, could, Julie, could you explore the, whether this is an opportunity to clean these rules up a little bit and add where appropriate where the authority for BOCs is?
I'd be happy to. I think one of the curses of Title 22 is from article to article. Sometimes definitions vary, right? Local board in some articles is only school districts and other places it's everybody. So why don't we just look, confirm and align it? That's fine.
Yeah, just make sure we got it, we got it right, if it, if it were to be made right. And maybe once you've had a chance to review it, just give me a call and just see what changes are in order.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Commissioner, should we still go to 1401 or have we totally messed things up?
Um, I will leave that to you. And, um, or Ms. Bloom, do you want to give the overview of them or, um?
Probably have to get some feedback since we're postponing. And my apologies for mixing that up. Something else was mixed up and this got lost.
That's okay. I went with your lead and so I, I skipped ahead too. So...
I did. That was lost.
I, I'm happy to go ahead and give, um, the overview. Hopefully it won't confuse it more than it already is.
Actually, this was a test for Mr. Durham to see if he's paying attention. And he's not.
Okay.
We, we got that now. Go ahead, Melissa.
Well, I'm now presenting information related to a rulemaking hearing for 1 CCR 30139, Rules for the Administration of the Public School Finance Act of 1994. Similarly, as a reminder, these rules were noticed with the Secretary of State's office in June and staff provided information on the rules to the board at the July meeting. So the proposed amendments here seek to clarify the department's policy for instructional time and student attendance for the 2020-21 school year. Specifically, these amendments provide a clear distinction between remote learning due to the COVID-19 pandemic and other types of off-site learning such as work-study, independent studies, supplemental online learning, um, in other years for the purposes of pupil funding and October count. Based on, um, Board Member questions in July, staff have also added clarifying language related to the phrase "under the supervision of a licensed or certified teacher" as that is applicable to staff and educators employed by a charter school. Additionally, no other public comment was received on these proposed amendments. We, CD staff were recommending that the board vote to adopt the proposed amendments to 1 CCR 30139. However, if the board does not vote today or is not unanimous, a second vote would be scheduled, um, for the September meeting. We are available to answer any questions you may have.
Colleagues? Board Member McClellan? Do you have any questions?
Um, maybe just a comment, and thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would tell staff what it was I was hoping for for either of these items with respect to maximizing integrity in our procedures and protocols. If I knew what in the world you were supposed to do in the event that there are rural districts with internet connectivity challenges and potentially, like in the case of districts where there might be, um, an employment center that, like a meat processing plant that produces a surge in a community with terrible internet access issues. Um, I don't know what you're supposed to do, um, with these issues in that instance. And I really hope that our rulemaking doesn't become part of the reason that a district hesitates to do the right thing from a public health standpoint. I know that we all want to make it possible for kids to be back in classrooms, um, wherever that's possible and safe. I just don't want our rulemaking to be a reason, um, that a dangerous condition persists. And so if I knew what to tell you that I was hoping for that was different than what you've proposed, I would surely tell you, but I'm afraid I don't have a better idea. So I thank staff for their efforts on this and I hope that we're able to come to a, a, a good conclusion that, um, does not discriminate against, um, rural districts as they try to make the difficult decisions in the event that their community experiences a surge with community spread. So thank you.
Board Member Scheffel?
No, thank you. I'm good.
Board Member Rankin?
I, I just think we need some staff clarification.
On this one, too?
Yes, yes. I, and, and I appreciate what Board Member McClellan said. I have been out in my district and I hear very, very strong, uh, words about going back in person and, and the low incidence of Corona in many of my counties. So, um, I have not, I have not heard the same thing she has heard about, uh, rurals.
May I clarify? I wasn't suggesting that there, that there isn't, um, an overwhelming desire in many rural districts to get back to in-person learning. That wasn't what I meant to suggest, just that in the event that you see a surge, um, I want to make sure that our, that the rules that we put in place are not the reason that a superintendent has a devil of a time trying to do the right thing, um, going forward with whatever rules we put in place. I hope I was not unclear about that. I wasn't meaning to suggest that there are surges in all the rural communities. Thanks.
And we don't have a meatpacking plant either.
Burlington does. So, I mean, sometimes they're in, yeah, some of them do, lots of them don't. I think we get it. Sorry, Joyce. I hope I was clear.
No, no. I, I, I would like to have 1401 and 1402 clarified at the next meeting.
Board Member Durham?
Well, I think, I think what I'm looking for more than anything else is, is that any, whatever we approve is verifiable and that we do plan on doing it at a minimum spot audits to, you know, to be able to verify that specific students were in fact, as a practical matter, enrolled. So, and that's all I'm trying to get to is that, is a level of accountability on the part of every district, rural and urban, uh, not to count students that are for all practical purposes not in attendance.
Yes, point well taken. Very good.
Uh, Board Member Flores, do you have any other comments or questions on this one?
No, I think I, I agree with all the comments, but I especially agree with, um, Ms. McClellan's, uh, concerns. And I just want to tell you that you don't have to, I know that, that living in a very dense district where, you know, I guess we have most of the COVID issues, a lot of the parents are, are very concerned, um, and teachers, of course. And this is Denver.
Thank you.
Of course, I think I live in probably the densest of all. Capitol Hill.
Thank you, Board Member Flores. So we're not going to have a motion where you're going to table 1401 and 1402 till next month, but I would recommend that colleagues, um, let Katie or Ms. Bloom know specifically what it is that they're looking for so that we can be kind of, kind of clear. Because I have a hunch, this is getting, going to be pretty critical time-wise.
Yeah, I think, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have some ideas on how we can clarify this. We've already been texting back and forth with each other, um, just, you know, but also putting some options. I think we've heard your feedback. I think we've heard what you're looking for a little bit more. So let us put some ideas together, um, for you to react to. We may want to do some phone calls with you, just some one-on-ones, um, that sort of thing, just to refine it.
I would suggest that, yep.
And so we, we will get to work on that and connect with you guys soon.
Great, thank you. Then we will stand in adjournment until tomorrow, 9:00 AM. Thank you all. Be well.
Thank you.